Good morning and welcome to the pre-agenda interview for Wednesday, July 24th, 2024, relative to the appointment of Alyssa Bellin as Assistant Director of PLI. Will the clerk please read the title of the bill?
Bill 651, Communication Informing Council of the Appointment of Alyssa Bellin as Assistant Director Construction of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections.
Thank you so much. And for the record, we're joined today by Councilmember Bob Charland, and other members may be joining us shortly. Welcome and congratulations on this appointment. As a reminder to everyone here and to the public watching, this is an informing of council. So council will not actually be taking a vote on your appointment, but we wanted to make sure that in this very important role that you're in, an important, very important department to the city, that we have the opportunity to talk to you a little bit, ask you some questions about your overarching 30,000-foot view of the department and the city, and your role in that, and how it fits into all the different pieces of PLI, and a little bit about your background, and give you the opportunity to introduce yourself to us and to the public. So I hope that some of our colleagues will be joining us soon. Before we turn it over to, and I'll turn it over to Councilman Charland first, since he was the one who thought to call for this and wanted to make sure he was asking some questions as well, before I do so, I wanted to give you the opportunity for some opening remarks or anything that you might want to say.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today as well. It's been my distinct pleasure, having worked with PLI for the last seven years and going through many changes that our department has gone through. I think at the end of the day, as a representative of the city, it's been a pleasure to help ensure the building safety continues throughout our city, and to be intimately involved with that has really been something that I've put a lot of effort and time and passion into.
Wonderful. Well, first I'll turn it over to my colleague, Councilperson Bob Charland, to ask you some questions.
Thank you so much for being here as a chair in this meeting. As Madam Chair said, we don't have to interview everyone, all the Assistant Directors, but this is really important for me and for all of us as we look towards where the future of PLI is headed. A personal point here is that we've got a very good relationship with Director Green and talk with him regularly, and I did not know that he did not backfill his position. So there were a lot of things that we were asking, and he's like, "When I have more capacity, I'll do this," and you are the more capacity. So we're excited for you. I'm excited for your Assistant Director here. But I wanted to talk a little bit about, you have a lot of experience in the department already. What are the things that the department has done that you're most proud of, and the innovations that have happened in PLI over the last period of time? This is a department that did not have cell phones in very recent memory. So lots has changed in PLI. What are the things that you're most excited about that have happened in the past?
So again, I've been with the department for seven years, so I've seen the nexus and the transformation from the days where we did not have personal cell phones to the days where we're fully automated using permitting software that really streamlines what we do. Some of the important things and changes that I've been a part of recently include the creation of the Building and Development Application, which has essentially broken down longstanding silos for departments like City Planning, DOME, and PLI to further streamline the permitting process. We've put a great deal of work into forming this application to essentially take two and combine into one, so the building permit and the zoning development review become one, making it easier for the applicant to get through the process, not needing specialized knowledge to get through the development process, and to be able to do this without going back and forth between departments. So what that application has done, it's used and leveraged the technology that we have for the online permitting system and streamlined communication between the three departments so that the applicant isn't responsible for knowing where they are in the process. So that project has been ongoing for quite some time. We recently just launched in the early part of June, and we're currently in the process of implementation and evaluating the first phase of it. But in my mind, this project has been pivotal to bridge the gap between the transformative technology that we have and implementing it for our customer base and all of those people who utilize that technology, too.
Great. That's really one of the things that we want to see here. From our perspective, you know, at least on your department or your part of PLI, the things that we'll get calls from are usually, there's usually two big categories, and it's, one, the large-scale developments that are having trouble getting through the process. But the thing that we get definitely more calls about, although they're not as big of a load, is someone who's looking for a deck permit or a fence permit, or some of the smaller home alterations that they're looking for, and they cannot figure out how to go through the process. Can you speak to me a little bit about, maybe in terms of the smaller-scale developments, what changes you would like to see in the department, what you'd like to build upon?
So I think that, again, speaking to the improvement that I just referenced, that really took those people into consideration, understanding that oftentimes our very technical process to obtain a permit is not something they are familiar with. So learning to listen to those concerns and those complaints and those issues that applicants are experiencing and bringing them into the work that we do on a daily basis has become informative for how we've transformed our processes to get to this point. So going forward, I would really like to build relationships with communities, with those people that live there, to ensure they're receiving consistent service, and making it through the questions that they have, being provided with timely and applicable feedback to their questions is important. So those relationships and using the technology that we have to reinforce them is really important to the department and to some of the things that I look forward to working through.
Now, you mentioned some of the technological improvements that have come, and I'm excited about the new form of one-stop, and some of the other technological expertise that's happened there. Obviously, still a major concern for me is the in-person and the way that we are handling folks without that digital literacy. In my district, which actually echoes kind of citywide, 10% of our residents don't have any internet access. What is the plan to work with them and get them through that, and when will we be able to see something there?
Thank you for bringing that up. I recognize that that has been a concern from the community and have heard that concern. I think that we've actively worked through the pandemic with the resources that we have to implement over 10,500 permits last year. That process hasn't changed. The way we do the process is slightly different without the in-person piece of the puzzle, but we are still performing all of those duties to the general public. We've got people from the application side and intake that are available through phone, online chat, and email, taking inquiries in order to support all of those questions that the community has. So work has actually not stopped, it's just been in a different format. And so we look forward to having that in-person communication for those who prefer it, but business has gone on as normal. And like I mentioned, with the volume of permits, those permits themselves have rebounded from pre and during pandemic time to the value that we had seen in the past. So we're looking at the volume as being representative of the methods in which we communicate being successful.
Well, and I understand that the volume might not change, but if you're part of that 10%, you don't have access to getting a permit. So what is, if I'm one of my residents that wants to put a deck on and I don't have internet access, what are my options?
The options would be to actually call and speak with one of our PLI application techs. They can answer a lot of basic questions, helping that applicant through the permit process. That person can also reach out to a direct plans examiner if they have a question about technical compliance with the application. So we actually have means for them touching base through off-site access to our system and to personnel who are actively working in the same capacity.
So a plans examiner would come out to your house if that's the case?
We don't offer those services. We do have some capacity to accommodate special requests at a limited basis, but anytime that that happens, we would request that it come through our office and that it's planned, just for safety concerns.
Okay. How many plans examiners, give me kind of the overview of that department. I'm familiar with a couple names in there that we seem to talk to regularly, but who is, give me the overview of kind of the size of each position and where we're looking at there.
Sure. So currently, we have 11 plans examiners. We have, in the budget, 14 positions. We recently had some retirement, but the volume of reviews that we're continuing to manage is consistent. So the staff changes have been minimal, and we've found that the core team of people who review our permit applications for code compliance, which is what our primary role is at that level, are able to perform those duties. So they work under two permitting supervisors. I was the third. We're looking to backfill that position. And then those plans examiners work throughout the permitting process with both the PLI application techs, who are part of the admin department who intake the permit applications, as well as the PLI construction inspectors, who I believe at current time, we have 33 positions filled in those roles. And then those communications between the plans examiners and inspectors help facilitate working through that permit process. So there's a symbiotic relationship that the individuals performing reviews and inspections have in order to ensure that the work we're doing is compliant with all the requirements to create a safe environment.
And really, the last question I have for you, I'm very concerned about the state of building in Pittsburgh, not in terms of the safety that we, you know, we expect people to be built by, but just how little building in Pittsburgh is happening right now. And I'm curious, your department has a large portion or a large role in this, not exclusively in your department, but can you tell me a little bit about where you see the state of building in Pittsburgh and where you would like to see it, you know, four years down the road?
Again, I think that the volume of permits and the value of construction is rebounding from the pandemic. The trends and the figures that we look at from 2023 show over $1.7 billion in permitted construction value. So to me, that's a large number. Now, I do understand that there are challenges to post-pandemic life. We're starting to recognize that office spaces are no longer necessary, right? We're changing the way we do business, and construction has also changed to meet those trends in demand for buildings. So I think that, you know, we are still experiencing construction. It's just different. We're seeing those trends rebound. We're starting to understand that people are no longer necessarily creating new spaces, but they're changing and altering the way spaces are used. So to me, the construction industry is strong, and I think, again, referencing back to the Building and Development Application, that process will continue to help streamline all of those development projects that oftentimes received difficulty throughout the permitting and construction process.
So I know I said it was my last question, but you brought up something else here, and we've got time, right? $1.7 billion in construction may be rebounding to where we were before. I struggle that I'm less interested in looking at previous year's data, and I want to see where we are related to comparable cities. Do you know what other cities are looking like as far as construction is concerned right now?
I think there are similar trends. It's difficult to compare Pittsburgh to Philadelphia just because of the volume of residents and types of infrastructure, but I do think that the trends are similar throughout the nation. We are all experiencing a change from primarily working in person in offices to remote work. So working through the permitting process would be, in my mind, working with those individuals who want to change the use of a space, who support growth and change. So I think that, again, that's consistent throughout the nation, and in my role, I intend to facilitate those changes if there is a desire to do so, right, through the permitting and development process.
I think we have three cranes operating in Pittsburgh right now. And when you compare us to, not Philadelphia, but compare us to comparable cities, that's not a whole lot. So that worries me, and it continues to kind of scare me as to where we are and what's coming down the pipeline. When you look at the planning commission meetings and you see that there's really not a whole lot on the agenda, that's a very worrisome fact for me. So not that that's necessarily all your department, but your department does play a major role in that. But thank you so much for meeting with us. You know, my big thing that I care a lot about is just communicating with us. Often, if someone's calling our office and they need help with a permit, it is something that our office cannot handle, so we need some expertise and your help to make sure that we're able to provide appropriate service. So I just really want to push that, how important that is, and over-communicating is always better than thinking that we know what we're talking about. So thank you.
Absolutely, and we're happy to keep those lines of communication open with you and other council people to, you know, keep that work that we're doing transparent and keep it going and assist and provide good customer service. Because at the end of the day, if we aren't serving the people who live in the city of Pittsburgh, what are we doing? So it's important to me and the department.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson Charland. I'll really just keep my questions fairly short and brief. I was curious if you and the director have already sort of worked out the roles and responsibilities to the extent, you know, high level, to the extent that, you know, this person's going to be more public-facing, this person's going to be more focused on internal management. Do you have a sense of that? And I only ask because it could very well be the case, like in some offices or departments, where both the, you know, where everyone does everything, like both the director and assistant director, and to the extent that there's a deputy director, there's a lot, you know, everyone's interacting with the public to some extent, everyone's doing some management to some extent, or is there going to be a separation of roles? And I see real opportunity, both to what the councilperson was saying around, you know, someone calls our office, they're not likely to be technically inclined to be able to access the portal, they just need to talk to someone or need to visit someone, or et cetera, right? There's that, there are those micro examples. But then there are the opportunities with, whether they're trade groups or whether they're neighborhood organizations that would benefit from the same sort of training on the portal that we receive as the fifth-floor, you know, council side. So, you know, who is available to do that? Is it you or the director? Is it going to be someone else? So I guess I'm just curious very generally on kind of what we can expect to see from the role.
That's a great question, and I will say that even prior to my appointment, I worked closely with Director Green to engage with different associations and community groups in order to provide an overview of what PLI is doing and answer specific questions in order to help keep those relationships strong. And so we haven't explicitly talked about that relationship with the public, but I would assume that it will continue, and I will take a role in helping the department in those situations. If you don't know, I also have a passion for teaching internally and externally. So I think that I naturally gravitate towards building relationships and rapport with outside agencies to further the work that we do and to keep us as a force in the community. So I don't think we have those position details defined, but I do imagine that we'll both act in some capacity to support the community at a public level.
That's great. Great to hear. And I'll end with more of a comment, which you're welcome to react to or not, but just to sort of drive another point that I heard home already, that in particular, you know, I want to see cranes in the air or projects being accomplished, larger projects being built. I also want to focus on housing because, as we know, you know, building more housing at all levels, at all price points, is going to help grow our population, grow our city. And I had a conversation the other day with someone who happened to be formerly an international graduate student, has stayed, has remained in Pittsburgh, is getting sponsorship through his university where he teaches to be able to get a green card. And when I said, "What would make it?" We get these international students, and then they leave. What do you and your peers, you know, what would keep you here? And I expected it to be somewhat around, you know, a cluster of jobs in the same field that would allow them some sort of, you know, ability to have flexibility to change jobs within their field or area of interest, or I thought maybe a sense of belonging. And it was really about quality housing. So ensuring that we have quality housing for those who are coming to Pittsburgh either from within the United States or outside of the United States, I don't know, just drove the point home to me that that's something we need to prioritize. And, you know, it should not go unsaid that that's also true for people who are longtime generational Pittsburghers as well, of course, but when it comes to growing our city, that's something I think about. That was all I had. I didn't know if you had anything to respond there. If not, that's completely fine, because I wanted to also leave room for Councilwoman Warwick.
I would say thank you for sharing that. It's good to have that perspective from the community, and that I do understand the housing market is changing, right? I see it. I see it in my own neighborhood of Morningside, and I do think that that's an active concern and something that we will continue to look at. Again, bringing it back to earlier conversation with Councilperson Charland, I think that the new process improvements we've done have made it easier to have that level of customer service for somebody who's looking to build a house or to even improve the house that they already have. So continuing that relationship with the community and understanding those needs will be critical to the success of people finding housing and maintaining a housing stock in Pittsburgh for those.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Let the record reflect, we've been joined by Councilperson Barbara Warwick. Councilperson Warwick, do you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry I'm late. I guess I do, the questions I have are sort of specific to my district. Well, first of all, it's about demolitions. Is there, it would be nice to have, so it feels like, I know, and I know for residents, it feels like houses are, you know, whether the houses or structures are just on the list for demo. They have like a tag or something on the door, and then they just never get torn down. I mean, I have one in my district that, you know, is, and I mean, it's a house next to someone else's house, there's a tree falling in it, like, it's like a landslide situation, and this person can't use their backyard. And I learned about that when I was campaigning for my first, you know, before I was in office, just knocking doors, and that was on the demo list for August of that summer, but I feel like at this point, that was almost two summers ago. So is there a way, and I know that I've sent a list of properties that I know about, like a way to just kind of get a list of demos, like what is, you know, in the same way that we have lists of projects for traffic calming and for other things that at least we can say to people, like, "This is what's happening this year."
May I ask a clarifying question? Are you referring to a demolition that was scheduled to be performed with city funds, or is this a private demolition? Do you happen to know?
I don't know. I don't know. I just know that it was scheduled, that was what I was told by PLIs, it's scheduled for August, and it just, you know...
So to me, it's sounding like that may be a city allocated funded demolition. So that process is slightly different than a demolition that's happening from a private contractor who is performing that with their funds. So I would imagine that if there were an application for that specific demolition, that's all public record through our online permitting system. You can look up an address and understand what status that permit is in, whether it's an inspection. As far as the city-funded demolition, I can't speak to it as it's under our operations division as much, so I don't want to provide information on that allocated budget. But I do understand that we attempt to prioritize based upon need and allocation of funds for those types of demolitions. And at the end of the day, if there are concerns from you or a member in the community, I would recommend either reaching out to us directly or submitting a 311 for that specific property so that we're aware of it and that we understand the status and can have an inspector visit to understand where the site is as well.
Yeah, so I mean, that's kind of what I'm getting at, is that I have sent that. Like, I've sent a list of specific properties, right, and said, like, "These are the properties that are priority, that we know about for our office, and, you know, could we get a list of like what's on the schedule for this year?" And we haven't been able to get that. So, you know, taking on this leadership role in the department is that something, because that allows us then to provide more transparency, right? Because, you know, if you have community groups, they don't necessarily have like this one, you know, they're like, "Well, you know, if I go down this street, there's the," you know, "So if we have a list of properties, it's nice if we can then provide, be like, 'Look, these are the ones.'" Or maybe that's wrong, right? Maybe if there's a list and it's like, "Oh, actually, this one isn't as much of an issue." Let's, you know...
Sure, and thank you for asking that question. I think what I would like to do is follow up with our operations division who oversees those city-funded demos, and we could coordinate on a path forward for maintaining transparency and providing information to you to ensure that your questions are being answered.
All right. Yeah, thanks. And then the next thing, and this is very specific to my district, is, and again, I don't know, it's something that I've raised over email, but sort of persists, is sort of, I'll just put it generally, sort of interpersonal issues between inspectors and the folks doing work in the neighborhood. Now, if it was just one person saying, "Oh, this inspector, you know, was inappropriate," you know, because I know that constituents can, you know, get a little hot under the collar and things can, you know, but when it is persistent, and I have multiple people all around my district, like, "Oh, yeah, you know, this city employee is a nightmare to work with," and I've reported that, sort of, what is the recourse there? Like, what, how do we deal with that type of thing?
So I thank you for raising that as well, and, you know, it is our responsibility to train and support staff to conduct business in a professional manner, and that's really what we strive for as individuals. I think we all go to work today understanding that we're serving our city. And so those interactions oftentimes happen, and we understand that they do happen, and we're willing to work with those individuals to mitigate and to work through, to provide better customer service if we don't meet those expectations. So I continue, I would recommend to continue to bring those to us so that we can work internally with those individuals to provide a high level of customer service to the people that are requesting service from us.
Yeah, I don't think I have any other questions. I assume that we've already gone over sort of how PLI intends to handle the rental registry. No? No? Oh, okay. Is that, I mean, do you have any?
It's not directly within my purview. I have some knowledge of it and I've been actively working with Director Green and the other assistant directors to work through that process for rental registration.
Okay, all right. I guess that's it. I just had some, you know, questions from my district, so.
Anything else, Councilperson Charlene? All right. With any closing comments, anything we should have asked you that you wanted to share with us that we didn't, you didn't get a chance to, an opportunity to speak to?
Again, I just want to thank everyone for their time and interest to interview me this morning. It's been a pleasure, although I was a little nervous, you know, granted the recent developments that we've had with our department, whether positive or negative. I think it's important for me to be here and be a public facing voice for what we do and to continue our initiative to make Pittsburgh a safer city and to facilitate the development that we do.
Well, thank you. You did a great job and thank you for your public service and for joining us today. Having exhausted the business of this pre-agenda interview, this meeting is adjourned. Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, July 24th, 2024. All council meetings will be live streamed on the city's website. And for guest speakers joining us, please do not turn your microphones off. May I have a motion to waive the rules?
So moved.
For, for starting beyond 10:29? Do we have a second? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlene.
Aye, here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Lavelle. Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith. Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson, Mrs. Strasburger Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is? Dr. Ronaldin Miller.
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Belsuver, Roma Talia, Berlin Deutschland. I'm a Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2024. What we seek is the best information at the highest level of intelligence to solve problems. I grew up on the border of Allegheny and Butler Counties, not too far from the assassination attempt, very familiar with that area. My mail for 20 years came through Valencia, which is in Butler, even though my home was in, in Allegheny County. I graduated tertiary honor, third, from Richland High School, which is now Pine Richland High School. There were two young women who beat me out at that. But I was president of student council and president of the band and National Honor Society, engaged in advanced biological studies. Maybe that's where I got the idea that I could work as president. But there were no political parties and I reject political parties right now as a means by which to run for president of the United States. A concern of this council is safety and security. Nobody checked when I came into this room for a laser pointer. See, it's something like this, Mr. Charlene, that I could use to disable you, your eyes, and anybody else who is on a, on a device. This is not a laser pointer, but it is dangerous. And the officer did not check to see whether a head went. Downstairs, there is no check for any of this kind of instrumentation. There's no check for biological or physical, chemical agents. On the 22nd of April, 2024, I came into the building, this house, and the scanner didn't work. But this has been a problem for more than a month. One of the scanners, the physical scanners, the actual mechanical scanners was replaced. So what was, what was the person supposed to do? I carry a bag with me because I travel a lot in the city and outside of the city, as Ms. Warwick and Ms. Kell Smith know, because they're talking about me right now. See, rude behavior, very typical of what happens on this council. I couldn't, couldn't pass through the entry without someone looking into my bag. That is not safety. Then I got into an elevator on the Grant and Fourth Street area, which is now coned off. That's your idea of safety? And I was in the elevator for half an hour. This is not a safe building.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Jamie Marie Christian. Is Jamie joining us? Not, we'll move on to our next registered speaker, Joanna Jo Demming.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me. I am here this morning to thank you guys. Thank Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith for introducing this contract. Thank you all for advancing it today in advance. I'm here because the Food Justice Fund matters. It matters to me. It matters to the members of the Food Policy Council, as well as the Food Justice Fund Committee and the thousands of community members impacted by racial injustice and food apartheid in Pittsburgh. It matters to our neighbors seeking relief from high food prices and unprecedented food donations. It matters to urban farmers working tirelessly to grow and provide food for our neighbors, to our neighbors that are developing corner stores and healthy markets to provide healthy food to our communities. It matters to those who've been waiting for over two years for this to become a reality. Our communities are struggling and yet our communities hold the solutions. The Food Justice Fund can move those solutions forward. So thank you so much. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Pastor Lutuel Love. Is Pastor Love with us? We will move on then to our next and final registered speaker, Al Jajib Chanalkaeen. Are they with us?
Greetings and like you, Alakaeen, the light of me honors the light of you that is proto Mayan. I am an Aboriginal American matrarch and my title is Yahalahi Chanalkaeen, located in the Delaware Territory, as you all would call Pittsburgh. I am a, I am also a graphic designer and a clerical assistant of America's Aboriginal Environmental Law Protectors and IPA Food Forestry Arts and Culture, who Chief East Pomanchakam Yehalahi is the founder of our indigenous community work. My people are the original beings, the original stewards, the original inhabitants of our ancestral lands, the Americas, including the islands, the unway, unway from our great law of peace. So my statement today will reflect invoking my people's story, our perspective, our constitutional indigenous rights. Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, excluding Indians not taxed. The etymology of tax, a noun, we are not to be evaluated, estimated, assessed, handled, touched, burdened, imposed a tax on, censored, charged, put a strain on to enter on a list or enrolled. We are not to be any of these nefarious actions. In the Gouvier's dictionary states, Indians, the Aboriginals, the Aboriginals of this country are so-called. My people are acknowledged in multiple maxims of law and lawful documents, such as the Constitution of the United States, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, excluding Indians not taxed, the Delaware Treaty, the Northwest Ordinance, the American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, House Congress Resolution 331. Whereas my people are acknowledged to the developments of the United States Constitution. And to reaffirm the continuing government to government relationship with my people, the 100th Congress Second Session, and the list continues. We are not to be confused with Title 25 Native Americans, who are also within the box of person, persons, immigrants, foreigners, citizens, naturalized citizens, non-citizens, residents, humans, individuals, all under the jurisdiction of the United States of America, which is a corporation, AKA a business. My people, the Aboriginal Americans, have been reclassified as so-called Indians, so-called colored, so-called Negro, and so-called Black. We are not socio-political constructs and we will not stand for continuously being discriminated against, conspired against, and committed genocidal actions against my people, my people's constitutional indigenous rights. Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, excluding Indians not taxed. Thomas C. W. O. Jordan case, Walter Ashton Plebber justified with the state, encouraging them to reclass non-reservation Indians to Negro, which has since been repealed as unlawful. Are you votes on city council, are you citizens, immigrants, foreigners, going to honor your oath to the Constitution? Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, excluding Indians not taxed. I'd like to read from the ADRIT, recognizing that the rights of my people are both essential and of historical significance to the present and future of the Americas. Concerned that my people have suffered from historic injustice, injustices as a result of colonization and the disposition of our ancestral lands, territories, and resources, thus preventing Aboriginal Americans from existing, from exercising, in particular, our right to development in accordance with our own needs and interests. My people's communities require and-
Thank you very much. There being no further registered speakers, we will now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium? Any speakers? There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. And our first committee of the day is the Finance and Law Committee that I chair.
New Papers, Bill 767, Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Catapult Greater Pittsburgh for services relating to delivering comprehensive financial counseling services to the City of Pittsburgh residents for a sum not to exceed $226,598.
Motion to approve. Discussion?
Second was discussion?
Yes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
With discussion, Councilman Charlene.
Is someone here to talk about this? I'm, I'm curious.
Yes, we have Chief Williams here to discuss this. And as she is finding her seat, I want to say that I do want to thank Chief Williams for proactively calling me before this was introduced and having a conversation with me about this bill.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief Williams, if you want to introduce yourself.
Sure, thank you. Felicity Williams, Deputy Chief of Staff to Mayor Ganey. Our chief financial officer here just made one note that we need to adjust to say mayor's office in the legislation. I think it just says mayor and Office of Management and Budget, but mayor's office.
Can you tell us what we're doing here? What, what this goes for, who takes advantage of it?
Absolutely.
How the program can be.
So the city has had a longstanding, has been providing this as a longstanding service, previously with a different vendor, Neighborhood Allies. They had a five-year contract that ended in, in 2023 to provide this service for financial counseling centers. At the conclusion of that contract, we issued an RFP to select a new vendor. We completed that process and today we are requesting authorization to enter into an agreement with that selected vendor. Being a city service, it is available to all of our City of Pittsburgh residents and in fact, folks who may not be City of Pittsburgh residents, but who work in the, in the communities and would utilize this service.
So I, I know this was a, a huge lift for Henry Horn-Piatt to get off the, the ground. But as the program stands now, where, how many people are taking advantage of this? How, what data are you looking at? Is it how much money is invested in, in themselves? What all is going on there?
So there is a really robust data system that we have authorization to utilize due to a relationship with a national organization called Cities for Financial Empowerment. The system is called FECBOT. Right now, the city-
FECBOT?
FECBOT, F E C B O T is an acronym. Right now, because we do not have a vendor under contract, the City of Pittsburgh does not have operating financial empowerment centers. So this is to get them back operational. Right now, there is a contract for financial empowerment centers that are with the county. And so the county is providing a financial counseling service. As you all can imagine, there are a lot of people within our city and county who need this service. And so we need multiple vendors to be able to meet the need of our city so that we have folks that are financially empowered.
How many people were going through Neighborhood Allies when they had the contract? How yearly?
Yes.
How many clients or I'm not sure if users, I'm not sure the correct term.
Yes, so initially through a period of the term of the contract, there were several hundred, about 500 or so folks who were served. One of the things that we are pivoting through our leadership is that we really want to focus on prioritizing City of Pittsburgh residents. These are city tax dollars that are going into this. There were not, there was not that focus previously. Now, of course, we would not deny anyone who would try to access this service, right? There's many people who work, play, live within the City of Pittsburgh that could benefit from this. But we want to ensure that there is a priority and focus on not only City of Pittsburgh residents, but of course, those who are most financially vulnerable, since this is a free service that they are accessing. And in addition, wanting to scale. We believe that we should be serving more folks than that over a period of three or so years. That's when we first checked in with them in their five-year term of their contract.
So I know that one of the ideas, when we talked about this previously, was that anyone that received, I'm not sure if it was a shut-off notice, but anyone who received essentially late billing from PWSA would also receive an advertisement for this or a brochure from this. Is that something that happened? Is that something we're going to continue to do? Or is that something we're going to expand to make sure that people know about this?
So I'm not aware of that having been something that happened previously. But one of the things that we have been emphasizing for this going forward is having a more robust referral system. So that's exactly what you are talking about. Part of that is referrals with other community partners. Part of that is referrals with government agencies, including the county. So we've been working on building a relationship with DHS so that we would have a, a referral system for both county residents for their financial empowerment centers and then city residents for the city's financial empowerment centers.
Okay. And it's for, for one year?
It's for a two-year term.
Two-year term, okay.
Yes.
All right. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Councilperson Charlene. Any further questions, discussion? So, did you have a question, Councilwoman? Okay.
I'll abstain today because I'm going to do my research on, on the organization.
Yeah, and just to the last point, I, I know that there have been, and I don't, this is necessarily, I don't need a response unless you have like a, and more to add than what you already said. I'm really interested in this shot-off notice for PWSA, as Vice Chair of PWSA. And I think we've also had discussions that have originated from sort of the lead, comprehensive lead bill, that, you know, what is, there, there should be no wrong front door to get services, right? Like, there should be like multiple front doors, whether you're coming, you're interacting with the county, they should be referring you to this. Whether you're interacting with the city and this contract, they should be referred to various other opportunities to take advantage of customers assistance programs, even with maybe private utilities, right? People's gas and Duquesne Light. Like, they should be aware of all the different services that are, that are available. So I, you know, I, I hope that we can continue to further expand it and make sure that they're all doing the same thing that we would be doing.
That is absolutely a goal of ours as we want to, again, as I said, we want to get this back operational. But beyond that, we want to expand and grow it. And so that is part of why we selected the partner that we did because they have such a well-known regional reputation and growing for providing these types of services, but not just financial counseling, but more holistically. They really take a trauma-informed approach around poverty and utilize that to look at the holistic person in the services that they are offering.
Thank you. So we do need a voice amendment to clarify the wording, both in the title and in the bill. Essentially, it would be to add the word- Essentially, it would be to add the word "office" after "mayor" and then strike through "and Director of Management and Budget." Discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of amending Bill 767, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Amendment is approved. That moves us on to the bill as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 767, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I believe we had one abstention from Councilwoman Kail Smith that she will clarify later. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill is, gets preliminary approval. That moves us on to Bill 768.
Bill 768, Resolution Authorizing Thirty-Six Open and Professional Services Agreements with Multiple Vendors to Provide Professional Services on an On-Call Basis as Required Related to Various Professional Services as Needed by the Various Departments of the City of Pittsburgh, each Agreement being at an Amount Not to Exceed $1,500,000 Annually for a Three-Year Term and Providing for Funding and the Costs thereof.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I've got discussion here.
Councilman Charlin.
Is anyone here to talk about this? In the title, there's almost-
Quite verbose.
It, it, it just has absolutely no specifics, other than-
Joshua Lamondy, Senior Sourcing Specialist, Office of Management and Budget. So traditionally, these are what are called our ITQs, our Invitation to Qualify Master Agreements. They are on-call professional services agreements. Traditionally, we have them set up and we go through legislation for one category at a time, so that would be engineering, construction management would be another category, what have you. Moving forward, in an effort to, in an effort to make this as efficient and as a non-complex procurement process as possible, we are rebidding all of these categories in two phases. This is that first category. So when it is worded as various professional services, I can go through those specific categories that we bid out this first time. There was basically a Phase One list and a Phase Two list. This is Phase One. Phase Two is actually in the initial process of being bid out at this time, but to call it one specific category would be doing it a disservice because it's a much more broad set of contracts than that. Would you like to hear those categories specifically?
Yeah, I need some specifics on this. Well, yeah, kind of what I'm hearing is that this is an open-end contract for various services.
Correct, and so each contract will be assigned a specific category. I will give you, hold on one second. So these categories that we are dealing with right now is architecture and interior design in general. Second category is architecture and interior design as specialty, so that's going to include your public safety buildings, your warehouses, your pools. Those are all defined by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, specialty architecture categories. Our construction management and construction inspection category, our commissioning category, our engineering and street design category, our geotechnical services category, our historic consulting category, our landscape architecture and site planning category, our project and program management category, our surveying category, and our right-of-way category.
So essentially, what this allows is this allows us to find, am I, I'm, sorry. I'm guessing here, but is, are you saying that this allows us to have qualified contractors when we determine that we need one of these services, that we don't need to go out for bidding anymore? This is-
Councilman, can you get closer to the microphone, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Thank you. So am I correct that what this allows us to do is when we just determine we need one of these services, we don't have to go out to bid? We can take someone who's already been a pre-approved contractor and go to them with this?
Yes and, yes and no. So depending on the dollar amount that we are dealing with, there are two sizes here. There are smalls and mediums. We're dealing with the medium category right now. The next bill up is the small category. For the small categories, we can go directly to that vendor a majority of the time. For these, for a larger dollar amount, those are put out to private bid, which is these vendors that we deal with right here. It results in an expedited timeline, an expedited contracting process. It gets these services to the citizens faster.
How do we determine who, you know, is a, yeah, who is, can be a-
So we are, we put together an evaluation category. It is comprised of primarily DOMI and DPW representatives, just because those are the primary users of these contracts. We also have feedback from several other departments as they, as they see the need to, PLI being one of them, Planning being one of them. But since they are the two primary users of these contracts, we go through an evaluation process just like we would for an RFP. It is a professional service, and so we, we do it on a pass/fail system. We look at the, we look at the proposals as a whole, and we determine if they meet our minimum baselines. Not even minimum baselines, just our, our standards for, for service. We do it on a pass/fail system because there does not need to be any clear winner. This does not guarantee work is going to be given to those contractors. It simply gets them in the door and on the list.
So if we have, I don't know, let's say, three approved contractors here for architecture design. Okay. How do we determine which one of those will then get the work when we determine that we need architecture design work? How do you determine?
We, it is still the, it is the same process as an RFP. It just didn't, it, it, it breaks down the barriers of contracting. So I say all that to say that we evaluate them based on the firm's qualifications. We evaluate them based on their previous experience in this category, based on their previous work experience with the city, their cost proposal, all of the standard evaluation criteria that would go into an RFP or another professional service, we do it here as well. The, really, the main difference here is that we already have them on contract, and we issue what's called a work order instead of a complete professional services contract.
By having them on contract, is that a way that this doesn't have to come to council anymore?
Correct. It is, we, we will do this, these are now termed for three years. These will be good for three years. Every time that we do an architecture job or a survey job, this, it won't come before council.
That's the part that speeds it up, is, is coming through, skipping the-
As well as the contract, yeah, so the contracting, the professional contracting phase, right? So it doesn't need to go through a full professional services agreement as well. This is the professional services agreement.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, appreciate it. I just went over this a few weeks ago for myself, before this bill was introduced, and I am still, I still go back and forth in not understanding the difference between a request or an RFQ and an ITQ.
An RFP?
No.
An RFQ?
Yes.
An RFQ is for a one-time purchase of non-professional goods or services for one time. It's a one-time purchase, under $30,000.
Okay, great. When we, when I was on the board at PWSA, I think we called the request for qualification RFQ, and it's basically what we're calling here, Invitation to Qualify, ITQ.
Everyone has a different nomer for it.
Okay, thank you. So I've got several authority board members nodding their heads, so just different vocabulary, but so a PWSA RFQ is here, we're calling it ITQ. And I've said this speech before, so apologies to the council members who hear it probably once a year. What we learned at PWSA between, like, when we got there in 2014 is that we were putting out basically one giant RFP a year, and like, two firms could bid on that nationally. I mean, there was like, basically run the water authority. It was that bad. It was that big. And so there was the PWSA board members, Councilwoman Strasberg, would you like to speak to Councilwoman Hill Smith about that? That was a little snarky. Thank you. Madam Chair? I have the floor. I have the floor.
Councilwoman Gross has the floor. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, appreciate that. I appreciate that. And so you've been doing it every time I've been speaking for weeks, and I'm resentful, clearly. So I have learned, right? We all learned at PWSA, to get back to the point in front of us, that you have to break down those RFPs into smaller pieces. And to learn how to do that, we had to request qualifications from local firms. The goal there and the goal here at this council now for the last 10 years is that we have, we want to increase the participation of like, local firms, minority firms, diverse firms, women-owned firms. And in order to do that, it's better to understand the field and understand that like, some firms can only do, you know, keep with the PWSA example, valves or something. And so to break down those gargantuan RFPs into smaller sizes allows firms to be able to even respond to the proposals. So are we achieving the same end here by having this ITQ?
I have great news for you as far as minority and women-owned businesses are concerned. This is an open application, so we are here for the first 36 firms that have applied to us. Of those first 36 firms, we have approximately, up to 50% participation in both M and WDBE categories. So we have 10 women-owned businesses that are before council today. We have six minority businesses before council today. We have one veteran-owned business, and we also have Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, as you all are familiar with them. So that puts our numbers right at about 17 or 18 of 36. We have about 50% primes in, in the MWDBE category. As far as local is concerned, I'm familiar with a lot of these firms, and I do know that they, there's a nice plurality of local firms. There's also some, some more national firms as well.
Thank you. So, I mean, I, I think we advocated for exactly this for years at the council table, and so it's, I think, a great way for us to, again, provide the public with enough transparency, but also get the, basically qualifications, this is an invitation to qualify, correct? That's what we call it. So to get the qualifications of the firms so that we can understand what is the capacity in order to bid out our projects. So I'm supportive today, I really appreciate it. Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Yeah, I'm going to make a few comments because, you know, my snarky self has to do that. But I will just say that I sit at this table, and everybody at this table talks from time to time and interrupts, including Councilwoman Gross, who does it from the time she walks in. So I'm going to say that part. Second of all, I'm going to say my comment was directed towards the water company and who's running it now, and I do hear a lot of things that are happening with our PWSA, regardless of there being a board or not being a board. It seems like there's a lot of involvement from the state level and from other people, and including the PUC, who they report to now. So for that, for that end, I'm going to make sure I, those comments are, my comments were really related to. But also for this, for this bill, I'm not comfortable with anything that doesn't come back before council, and I've never advocated for something not to come back for council. I do like the idea that we're doing RFPs and RFQs and all those sorts of things. I do like that, but I do think that they should come back to council. And go ahead, did you want to say something, clarify? If I misunderstood, I want to know.
This is the same ITQ process that we go through from time to time. I've been before you folks for the landmark conservation and preservations. That was last year. I don't recall you having initial concerns about that.
So I don't recall there being other people having concerns about what's happening here with our public dollars. So I think that's raised my level of concern. And so if you want to have that conversation publicly, we'll have it. Or if you want to have it later, then I'm willing to have it, and I'll abstain today.
I mean, whatever you would like. I, I just want to make sure that you understand that this is the same process, just different categories.
No, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes. Chair, any question?
Thank you very much, and I will pay better attention to any hands raised online, apologies.
I didn't raise my hand.
Oh, okay.
I didn't blurt it out when I said anyone else. Yeah, I, I have a question, so thanks for coming to the table and talking about this. So I just want to get an understanding. I've had some sidewalks redone on the north side, and, and, you know, there was a contractor that, that basically, that, you know, the work that was done didn't come before council, but, you know, it worked with DOMI to get it done. I mean, is this what we're talking about? This is like, those are the contractors that are already on hand, have already qualified, and, you know, were able to spend up to X amount to get that work done?
That sounds, that sounds like it was more our pre-qualified list. If it was the actual paving and the repair of concrete, that would not be covered under today's bills.
Okay, so apologize. Can you just give me a, what is different about this than what we've done in the past?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Councilman?
What is different about this than we've done in the past?
What is different about this set of ITQs than what we've done in the past? That is, okay, so as I understand it, the only difference here is the dollar amounts have changed, the upper limits have changed, they have decreased in value. That is per revisions to City Code that I believe councils had serious discussion about in the previous year, as well as a cap on the terms. Previously, we did a initial three-year term with two, with options to extend for two one-year periods. That has now been done away with. We are just doing a flat three-year term, no renewals. At that point, we will put this back out to bid again, and we will reevaluate at that time. So in summary, the two differences are decreased ability to spend under these contracts and a decreased term overall.
Okay, and can you give me a real-world example of how I would see this, you know, one of these contracts?
Sure, so-
Help the, help the residents?
So the high visibility, one of the highest visibility projects is Homewood Park right now. $15 million construction, four major primes on the project, impacts the entire community, multi-sports center. To haul dirt in and out, to cone off the roads, to handle all of the coordination between four prime trades, we need somebody to do the construction management of that, of that job. This is where we would go out, issue what some would understand to be like an RFP, but under the, under these terms, it's a more expedited system. We select the most qualified contractor that we're satisfied with, and then that vendor is able to get right on the job, coordinate with the community, coordinate with the contractors, make sure the traffic flows around and past the site properly, make sure that nobody's waiting in a traffic line for minutes at a time, for hours at a time, just ensures the unfettered enjoyment of the community for everybody that neighbors on that project.
And we'll be able to see who's selected, like, that'll come back to council?
That is all available upon request. It doesn't really come back to council upon request, but it's all, it's all, it goes through the, it goes through the Controller's office, it goes through our office, it goes through multiple levels of verification and signature, and that would all be available to you upon request.
Yeah. So right now, this bill, though, doesn't show who those contractors are?
It does show who the contractors are, on the fiscal impact statement.
Okay, okay, so this is the bill?
This is the bill.
Shows us the contractors, and then this activates it for three years?
Correct. All of the contractors are listed under the fiscal impact statement.
I got you, okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? First round? I, when you say available upon request, the easiest way for someone to look at, to find this, if they were not a council member and they didn't, you know, weren't kind of looking at this, this legislation and the fiscal note, I guess my question is, does it, does it appear on the webpage that's available to the public that shows all the other kind of requests for proposals and bids and everything like that? Or is there a way to kind of further, to further make this transparent to the average person?
So it is not immediately transparent to anybody who just wants to log on and find it. And the, the, the true answer is, it would be an absolute logistical nightmare to upload all these work orders, to process all these work orders. We process hundreds of work orders a month, probably, and, and, and the levels of budgetary verification, the levels of signature verification that have to go through that, it, it would be a very large lift and a very large time suck to get those all uploaded individually. That's my, that is truly the answer. I mean, like I said, if anybody would like to see them, they are a signed public contract, they're, they're certainly available. There's no right-to-know boundaries there.
What if they were divorced from the actual work orders themselves? It was just- It was just the list of the available...
Oh, of the available contractors?
Yeah.
Yes, that is available via open book.
That is on open book, okay.
The master agreements that we are voting on here today...
Will be on open book.
Are available on open book.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's mainly what I wanted to know. Okay, great. Any further discussion, first round? Second round? All, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of Bill 768, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain. Stain.
Three abstentions. Affirmative recommendation. Hearing no other exemptions. Thank you very much. That, if you can stay here with us for 769, that moves us on to Bill 769.
Bill 769, resolution authorizing 36 open and professional services agreements with multiple vendors to provide professional services on an on-call basis as required related to various professional services as needed by the various departments of the City of Pittsburgh. Each agreement being at an amount not to exceed $750,000 annually for a three-year term and providing for funding of the costs thereof.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Second discussion on 769. Seeing none, I think we got all our questions answered. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 769, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain. Abstain.
Three abstentions, affirmative recommendation. Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us. That moves us on to deferred papers.
Bill 642, resolution authorizing interdepartmental transfers in the amount of $1,479,512.47 from the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Administration, the Department of Public Works Bureau of Operations and Bureau of Facilities, and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. These budget-neutral transfers are necessary to properly align funding associated with Pittsburgh Joint Collective Bargaining Committee contract ratification.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 642, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill 643.
Bill 643, resolution amending Resolution 407 of 2024, which re-appropriated Federal American Rescue Plan funding by updating the approved projects as outlined in Exhibit A, Version 8.
Second?
With discussion?
Second with discussion, Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you, and I have an amendment in front of you for this. This is just moving funding from demo to paving for, we have, we have three roads that are torn up in the Elliott community, and this is to address those roads.
Can I get a motion to amend?
Motion to amend.
Discussion on the amendment?
That was it.
Any further discussion? Councilman Charlin?
Yeah, I mean, so I still don't understand what we're doing here, and I think there's a couple, you know, of these, or this might be the only one here. I mentioned before that I would be really helpful to have a briefing on exactly what this is. There's, there's a good bit of money moving around, and I, I feel like I'm ill-informed to vote on this today. I would really like to hold this for a briefing. I know that previously, we were, you know, when I mentioned that, we were told that we were gonna kind of be briefed individually from OMB. That hasn't happened, so I don't really know what I'm voting on. There's, there's things in this that make sense, but there's other things that I don't quite understand. I can't evaluate if they're good or bad, because I don't quite get them, so I would really like to, to hold for a briefing.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Kail Smith?
I just wanna say, but your questions are not really just to this, isolated to this one bill, they're related to all the ARPA funds and all the ARPA money. Is that correct?
No, I, I'm concerned with the movement around ARPA. I understand the, the concept that we're gonna try to move as much ARPA funding into existing projects as possible, but I'm also seeing things on here, like the mobile restroom project is a new allocation, and, but yet is in an old year. And there's probably a good reason for that, I just don't know what it is, and...
So can I just say, I'm not opposed to holding, but I would like for us to maybe even consider authorizing all this today, and then when it comes for next, make sure that we schedule a briefing prior to final vote, and if not, then we recommit the bills. Would you be okay with that?
Is there a reason why we have to move it by, before recess?
Well, mine for the, is for the paving, because the roads are torn up. So that, mine is for that issue.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'll just interject to say, it's my understanding that there are some projects similar to those that are, that are time-sensitive. That said, the expectation has been set that OMB and members of the mayor's office and whoever's relevant here provide a briefing, an individual briefing, or at the very least a, an email explanation for all portions of this, these transfers to every council member, especially those relevant to their district. And they're here today, they're, you know, they're here, that we can bring them to the table if we'd like, but I, I don't know if that's necessary, because they know that that's the expectation that should be happening. Absent that, absolutely a briefing would be necessary as well. So wanted members to know that that expectation has been set, it should be happening, and I hope it happens soon. If not, happy to hold for a briefing. Thank you. Council President Lavelle?
Well, I mean, we have our directors here. If it'd be helpful for them to come to the table, I, I feel comfortable, because I believe I understand what's happening, but if Councilman Charlin has questions, I'd like him to be able to ask them.
Yeah, I don't think I need as much of a public briefing as I need to be able to ask questions about what I'm looking at, so I'm, I'm happy to abstain if other members wanna see this move through today. But, you know, I will not be voting for this next week if I don't have any answers to what I'm looking at, and I think the rest of members should understand what we're talking about here as well.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those, all those in favor of amending Bill 643, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Amendment is approved?
Sorry. Aye on the amendment. I apologize.
Amendment is approved. That moves this, that takes us to 643 as amended. Any further discussion on the bill as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 643 as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
One abstention, affirmative recommendation. Thank you. That moves us on to Bill 684.
Bill 684, resolution amending Resolution 578 of 2021, which authorized an American Rescue Plan Act agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Parking Authority by adding Melon Square storefront support as an additional authorized project at a cost not to exceed $1,536,398.11 for a total authorized spend not to exceed $1,616,398.11.
Is there a second?
With discussion?
Second with discussion, Councilman Coghill.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I have questions. Is anybody here to speak to this?
We have Director Pollak and Patrick Cornell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jake Pollak, Deputy Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and Director of the Office of Management and Budget.
Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer. So Bill 684, 685, 686, all the, all the way through 689 are companions to the bill that council just preliminarily authorized. So Bill 643, reapportioning American Rescue Plan funding, excuse me, reappropriating American Rescue Plan funding, updates the ARPA plan as the whole. And then the list of bills from 684 to 689 are amendments to various capital budget years or other agreements necessary to put those changes to the overall spending plan into effect. So all those bills taken together is what accomplishes that change. In this particular instance, funding was allocated to the Urban Redevelopment Authority to improve, make improvements to the series of storefronts on Smithfield Street that are underneath Melon Square Park.
I'm very familiar, yeah, yeah. And that really is just my question, not, you know, is that, what are we doing? Are we preparing them for sale? Are we just making them prettier? What's the purpose?
We can't sell them. They're part of the park and the parking garage, they're, they're not separable from that. They are in need of significant upgrades. The previous version of the plan assigned the work to do those upgrades to the URA, however, because the Parking Authority currently has a construction contract to make improvements to the garage itself, it's simpler, faster, and more efficient for the Parking Authority to just add these improvements to their scope of work. So we're simply changing the agency responsible for making the improvements, given that they're already proceeding with construction in the building.
Yeah, so the last I saw, it was boarded up. Is it still boarded up?
Yes.
Okay, so what are we gonna do to that? To the retail spaces?
The spaces had been, I would say, at least underoccupied for a long time for a variety of reasons. They lacked adequate plumbing for restrooms, the, and then their physical condition in many cases had deteriorated. So the URA has been under contract for a while to lease them, but have been unable to find businesses interested in moving in because of the condition and quality of the space.
Yeah, so we're improving the aesthetics and hoping that we attract a retail...
Not just the aesthetics, but also replacing the plumbing, replacing the mechanical systems, upgrading them to modern standards so that they're usable for retail purposes.
Are we putting glass fronts in, or?
They already have that. I, I imagine the work would involve replacing the windows, but the fronts of the space are already glass.
Oh, I thought they were still boarded up.
Well, if you go behind the...
Oh, okay, okay, the glass is intact behind the boards.
The plywood closes off the area under the overhang, so that it doesn't become a point of congregation while they're unoccupied, but behind that is space of sidewalk before you get to the storefront.
So the windows are intact, and the windows, we're not replacing the windows?
I don't know if we are replacing the windows, but if we are...
I'm just trying to figure out the scope of it.
If we are replacing them, they will be replaced in kind. So they were windows before, they will remain windows. I don't believe anyone's, no significant changes are proposed to the, to what they look like on the front. I do believe in the course of this work, it was a long series of numerous very narrow frontages. I believe part of what's being contemplated here might remove some of those interior walls and make some wider spaces. We are also working to place, install some permanent indoor public restrooms in that space. So there'd be a reconfiguration of it of the floor plan, again, to make it more usable by potential tenants or other users.
And then whenever our end is done, we're gonna put it on the market?
Yes. Yes.
How many storefronts are there?
I don't know that off the top of my head, and again, that number may change.
Four.
Well, it had undergone changes even, and, you know, the, for a while, the, what was then called the Port Authority, now PRT, had a space in there for the, you know, sale of, or bus passes and things like that. I believe they had taken two storefronts and merged them, so that has moved and changed over time.
Okay, that's good. So we're gonna improve the aesthetics, we're gonna do some work inside, plumbing and such that make it inhabitable for somebody to come in and want to...
That's correct.
Lease or rent or whatever, yeah. So, okay, I think it's a good idea. Nobody's gonna be interested in its current state, so I'll be supportive.
That's correct.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 684, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
You're just abstaining till you get the briefing, right?
Yeah.
On all these, okay.
One, one, sorry, was that one abstention?
Yes.
One abstention, affirmative recommendation, thank you. Please remain here at the table, I think we'll have a couple more questions. That moves us on to Bill 685.
Bill 685, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with the County of Allegheny for the completion of lead safety projects as approved in the City of Pittsburgh's American Rescue Plan Act allocation at a cost not to exceed $600,000.
Can I get a motion?
With discussion?
With discussion? Do we have a second? Second, thank you, so that we can discuss this. Thank you, Councilman Coghill.
Okay, again, what's the scope of this work? $600,000 for lead mediation? What, what are we doing with that?
The proposal here, and I, understanding that we're discussing these bill by bill, I don't know if this is appropriate or council's desire, but I have copies of the summary of changes that was attached to the original legislation. So you've all had this since these were originally introduced, however, we did produce an updated version just to reflect the dollar amount changes that are incorporated by Councilwoman Kail Smith's amendments. None of the, nothing has changed except the dollar amounts as reflected in her amendment, but it shows the interrelationship of all the changes. We prepared that in case we were called up on the original bill. In this case, these are funds that were allocated to lead remediation work by PLI as we approached the ARPA deadline, and given the, a level of funding that was utilized, has been utilized to date or is under contract by PLI in that area of work. We don't believe that the full funding will be expended before the deadline. This proposal would allow us to enter into contracts with the county to support some of their lead-related work in the Department of Economic Development and Department of Health, so that it would be spent on a similar function and only for city residents, but by having it under contract with the county at this time, we would meet the ARPA spending deadline.
So this is not allocated for a specific project?
Not a specific project, no, for supports for residents with lead remediation needs.
That was my question. Okay, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilwoman Kail Smith?
So can you explain the program a little bit more to me? How do people apply? I mean, is there an application process?
So the county has a few existing programs in place. The Lead Safe Homes program is also partially funded through housing and urban development and federal government. So what we have been in discussions with Allegheny County would be to bolster those efforts in the City of Pittsburgh for residents in particular, but the county does have other existing programs that assist with, you know, replacement of, of things within the house that would come up as a reaction to lead abatement and remediation.
So I'm gonna just say this, I think that we do a lot with the county, and I'm grateful for that, and I think that there's more opportunities for us to do even more with the county. But I would like to see it, you know, reciprocated sometime. I don't see as much coming back to the city, and I would like to see the county use some of their billions of dollars to help us with a lot of this. The City of Pittsburgh's trying to do a lot of social service programs, and I'll talk about that next when we, or when we come up with our bills for the food, you know, food justice program. But I would like to see them give back to us. We are part of the county, a large part of the county, and I would like to see them, and I would like to know, there may be, that I'm not aware of, dollars coming into the city that are helping us with social services, that are helping us with some of the things that, the lead line stuff, and all kinds of other sorts of things that we don't know, the elevators, we talked about those before. And so I would like to see maybe some breakdown of what we're getting back from the county, and how much we're putting out to the county.
Sure. With respect to human services in particular, we are in conversations, and we have some ideas generating that we are hoping to be ready to introduce to you for the fiscal '25 budget.
I would love to see them pay for our Office of OCHS. I mean, some things like that would be, so to me, a good faith effort, that they, they understand that we have unique issues here in the city, and we are part of the county, and we would like to see some of those dollars. I would also like to see when we have events in the city that they help absorb some of the cost for, you know, in either police, you know, fire, you know, some kind of, some kind of collaboration. And I know we do in some things, but I think that now that our police department's getting to be, you know, so short-staffed, I think it would be nice to see, because it benefits the whole county when Pittsburgh's doing well. So I would like to see us have some of those dollars offset with some help from them and support from them. And maybe they have them, like I said, and I'm just not aware, so if we can have some of that, I'd like to see that. But I'm supportive to this, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go a little out of order, just to clarify a few things. So we pulled together a call of all the original bill sponsors, council bill sponsors, along with the representatives from OMB here today, and the Get the Lead Out Coalition, who worked hand-in-glove with council originally, to discuss this reallocation. This was a, an allocation originally that complemented the comprehensive Lead Safe Bill of 2021, and was meant for... and was meant for a number of different purposes. And as we've discussed, some of them, you know, some of the money has been very appropriately expended and then, in part because of the holdup of rental registration, we haven't been able to expend it the way that we thought originally. So this is a necessary reallocation. I do think that there's still some homework. We're all, you know, coming away from that call with both the advocates as to some of their ideas, some homework on our end as well, to determine that whether the agreement with the county is the ultimate and the best use of these funds or whether there's something, you know, such as even just the idea of, you know, water filtering stations at every public-facing faucet in the city, as an example. Right? So like lots of ideas on the table. And I think even within the county, there were some questions as to what department within the county would be best. So wanted to level set there, and I would recommend a hold today so that we can... All the different parties can get the homework done and come back together and have a real set and agreed-upon understanding of where these funds will be spent ultimately. Understanding that there might be a future discussion about ARPA reallocation, that we hold this one today until after recess, five weeks. But I didn't want to shut down conversation. I just wanted to clarify before we had further discussion. Was there any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none.
Motion to hold for five weeks?
Is there a second? Discussion? All those in favor of a five-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held for five weeks? Thank you. That moves us on to Bill 686.
Bill 686, resolution further amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020, as amended and titled. Resolution adopting and approving the 2021 capital budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by reducing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by $500,000, reducing step repair and replacement by $560,225.48, increasing street resurfacing by $110,358.71, and by increasing facility improvements, city facilities, by $2,132,493.97.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 686, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Affirmative recommendation, one abstention. Bill 687.
Bill 687, resolution further amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, as amended and titled. Resolution adopting and approving the 2022 capital budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by increasing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by $1,629,476, reducing step repair and replacement by $1,400,000, increasing street resurfacing by $132,493.77, and decreasing facility improvements, city facilities, by $361,969.77.
Motion to approve. Discussion?
Do we have a second? With discussion, Councilwoman Kail Smith.
You know, I have to ask you publicly what's going on with the West End Senior Center.
Don't... Hold on a second. Yeah, so the West End Senior Center is not impacted by these changes. Just... Sorry, that's the reason I wanted to double-check. I understand that your question is broader than that and just looking for an update. We're in the final phases of interior renovations at the West End Senior Center in anticipation of reopening very soon. I don't have a date for you on that, but, you know, they're at the, you know, two-yard line on internal finishes and completing that work.
And I'll just say, in general, I think the West End is feeling a little bit of angst because they're seeing storefronts close and they're seeing that the Senior Center's not open yet, but it will be, and I want them to know that. And the Fire Bureau is... They're moving... I'm sorry, it's not the Bureau. It's the credit union is moving to Banksville, but staying in our district, which I'm happy about. But then there will be another building. So I just want to make sure that we're mindful of what's happening in the West End, you know, proper, and that they need some attention too. But for this, I'm thankful to move some of the money and help. I mean, I don't have any other questions because we did talk, so I do want to thank you for that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 687, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Me too.
Abstain.
One abstention, affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Bill 688.
Bill 688, resolution further amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, effective December 19, 2022, as amended and titled. Resolution adopting and approving the 2023 capital budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by reducing facility improvements, city facilities, by $1,770,524, increasing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by $370,524, increasing street resurfacing by $447,373, and increasing remediation of condemned buildings by $1,052,627.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 688, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative abstention, one abstention, affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Bill 689.
Bill 689, resolution further amending Resolution Number 857 of 2023, effective December 27, 2023, as amended and titled. Resolution adopting and approving the 2024 capital budget, the proposed 2024 Community Development Program and the 2024 through 2029 Capital Improvement Program by reducing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by $1,992,879.64, increasing step repair and replacement by $1,960,225.48, and increasing street resurfacing by $32,654.16.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 689, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation?
Abstain.
One abstentions, one abstention. Thank you very much for joining us. It moves us on to Bill 705.
Bill 705, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct. Article 5 Discrimination, Chapter 651 Findings and Policy and Chapter 659 Unlawful Practices to make medical marijuana patients a protected class and restrict discrimination against them.
Motion to approve. Discussion? Second. Discussion, Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, so, thank you. Yeah, so this bill, the purpose of this bill is to end employment discrimination against medical marijuana patients in the City of Pittsburgh. So the legislation, what it does is that it adds medical marijuana cardholders to the list of protected classes here in the city. And it prohibits discrimination against an employee or a prospective employee in the city because of their lawful status as a medical marijuana patient. And finally, it classifies as discrimination drug testing for marijuana as a requirement for their employment. Why are we doing this? Medical marijuana cardholders in Pittsburgh have taken the time to secure legal permission from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to use cannabis to treat a medical condition. And excluding them from employment opportunities because of that is wrong. It also puts up wholly unnecessary barriers to employment during a time when businesses and industries across the city are desperately trying to fill positions that help our region grow. There are some federal and state required exclusions in this legislation. Positions that are subject to drug testing due to regulations of the United States Department of Transportation, or PENDOT, which generally means jobs requiring a commercial driver's license, excluded are also positions that require the employee to carry a firearm. In this bill, employers can still test for cause, which means suspected intoxication at work. And they can also test following any workplace accident. Patients can also be restricted from performing any task which an employer deems life-threatening while under the influence of marijuana. And this is taken directly from the state code. And finally, the ordinance also explicitly does not require employers to allow use of medical marijuana on the premises or property of the workplace. And I do want to say that we have our Office of... our Commission on Human Relations here to talk about how the city can work with employers on best practices and answer any questions as we roll this out. Chris, would you like to come to the table to talk a little bit about that? Commission on Human Relations is developing this guidance, so I'll let Chris talk a little bit about that.
Hello, everyone. My name is Christopher Salt. I'm the Deputy Director for the City of Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations. I'm appearing on behalf of the Commission today, as well as for Director Shepherd, who couldn't be here. She accepted an invitation from the Carter Institute. So for those who aren't aware, the City of Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations is the anti-discrimination, civil rights enforcement body for the City of Pittsburgh. Early on in this process, Councilmember Warwick had contacted our office for consultation to ensure that the bill that is being presented would both be beneficial and also enforceable. We brought in our employment solicitors, Brongo, Malo, and Brongo, to also offer their professional opinions on this bill. So I am here to take any questions you might have.
Councilwoman Warwick, the floor is still yours.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. I'll open it up to...
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill.
Okay, thank you. I really don't have any questions for you, Chris. Just a comment. And I said this two weeks ago. Anytime we put a bill on the floor that may affect hiring practices for our labor unions, which is the utmost importance to them, red flags go up. They want to make sure that it... That they know every detail of that, and they know how and what it affects as to what they do. You were gracious enough to grant us a week hold last week. The attorneys looked at it. I had gotten numerous phone calls from all of the trades unions, including the master builders, including the carpenters. And they still have concerns. They're not saying their concerns are valid yet. They just need time. They need more time to dissect this. As of last week, after you held for a week, I sent the legislation to the building trades. It's the first they've seen of it, I will tell you. So they had a week to pore over it. They still have questions and concerns. They're not saying it's good or bad at this point. They simply are asking for more time in order to make a smart decision on their part. So with... I'm going to offer a... I'm going to offer to hold for six weeks. I'm going to make a motion to hold for six weeks. I'll wait on that in case others have a conversation, if that's okay with you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion here? Council President Laval, followed by Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Sure, just very briefly. One, I'm supportive of the bill. So just sort of openly state that. Two, correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe you can answer this, Councilwoman Warwick. If the steelworkers have concern, given that they're actually not in the city, this wouldn't apply to them?
Interrogatory.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes, so unfortunately, unfortunately, no. This would not apply to anyone doing, you know, hiring... bringing on apprentices or hiring outside of the city.
Thank you. Also, still interrogatory. I just want to make sure I'm clear. We've effectively copied the state bill and put it into the city code. And then we've also put in a provision that says, if at any time on the job, any union had a concern, they had the opportunity to still pull that person.
Yes, correct. So if an employer has cause, right? So let's say an employee appears intoxicated, for example, then that employee can be tested. Also, in the case of a workplace accident, that employee can be tested. Now, as far as job sites in the City of Pittsburgh, so let's say, you know, for example, you have a construction company doing a job. This bill would limit their ability to do random drug testing, again, specifically for marijuana, for medical marijuana patients. And if it's helpful, my understanding is that the way that the City of Pittsburgh, because we already do this, right, at the City of Pittsburgh, is that, you know, whether you are being hired or whether it's some type of random test, you go to the testing facility. You show your medical marijuana card at the testing facility. And then the, you know, so the panel, you know, there's the panel of tests. And so the medical... The marijuana test would come back negative. But again, you're showing your card at the testing facility, therefore maintaining the privacy, right, of your status as a medical marijuana patient.
Thank you. Again, I'm prepared to vote today. I understand Councilman Coghill is going to offer a motion to hold. If it is held, I'm more than willing to... Because I think more than anything, this is probably more educational for those that have concerns, that I'm more than willing to sort of help mediate in those conversations to the extent that they're necessary. If they're not, I'm more than willing to stay away from it. But thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you. I just want to... I just had a slight conversation with Councilwoman Warwick, but I hear that there's concerns, but she is the bill sponsor. And I hear... I heard what you said, that they... The unions did not know in advance. Because I was wondering why they didn't reach the bill... Reach out to the bill sponsor. Because it's always a concern when I see women circumvented at the table. Everybody knows that. I have a little... I have a hard time with that. But I heard you mention that it won't affect people that are outside of Allegheny County. Will it affect them if they come into the city to work?
So again, if it's a job site, so let's say you're hired, right? Say you're hired, but the job site is... The job is in the City of Pittsburgh.
Okay.
And let's say the employer wants to do a random drug test on the job site.
Okay.
If you are a medical marijuana card holder, then when you go for that test, right, your status, right, the testing for marijuana would not apply.
Hey, I think the one thing everybody on both sides of the aisle agree with... agree on is marijuana is going to be legal in a couple of years. So I mean, but I will say that. But so I... And I actually mentioned to you before this, I had an issue where there was someone here in the city who was turned down, who had a medical marijuana card but failed the drug test. And he was turned down for a position, but Director Hornstein stepped up and actually hired him. So I was, you know, grateful for that because he's actually a really great worker. He just had a medical marijuana card. But anyway, for... But I'm supportive of the hold for today and then hopefully that we'll get through this conversation. But in the end, you know, unless I hear some significant reason why not to from now till then, I would be supportive of it as well.
Any further discussion first round? Second round, Councilwoman... Councilperson Warwick.
Yeah, so just quickly, I do want to address this notion that, you know, no one knew about this, because on May 1, I emailed this bill to labor leadership and did not get a response. There are... I'm not going to name names, but there are other folks in various trades who I, again, emailed that have had numerous conversations with. I've also had extensive conversations with the construct... you know, the sort of leadership in the construction industry. So I do want to underscore that this is a bill to protect workers who are legally using medical marijuana, to protect them from discrimination. And the exceptions that are in the bill are taken directly from state code. This is not a bill to carve out further exceptions for the benefit of one industry or another at the expense of workers. We are protecting workers. We are not evaluating industry by industry, you know, which... We are not evaluating industry by industry, you know, what, which employers would, would prefer to do when it comes to medical marijuana. That's, that's, that's not what we do here at council, and that's not what this bill does. We did actually have a draft of this bill, which had more exclusions, but in reviewing that, we realized that, that, that broader language would actually exclude workers, including our firefighters, and others who are, you know, who are already doing the right thing, right, who are already doing the right thing. So we didn't want to harm existing workers and employers that are already not discriminating against medical marijuana patients. And so, you know, with language that's taken directly from the state code, patients can also be restricted from doing any task, any specific task which an employer deems life-threatening while under the influence of marijuana. And again, we have added, in addition, this for, you know, the ability to test for cause, and also the ability to test in the case of an accident. So, this really is not about safety either. So, you know, and again, I do want to say, my, my office and myself have made extensive efforts to reach out to folks, to discuss this bill, to make adjustments to, so that this can work for, you know, for as many groups as possible. And, we already held one week last week, and none of, now, you know, perhaps Councilman Coghill has had a number of conversations, but no one has called me. So, I, I don't see the purpose of holding for another five weeks. I think, as we all know, you know, looking at the State House, like, holding bills, just endless, endlessly holding and holding and holding to figure things out, is just sort of a tactic to kill legislation. This bill is simple. There has been extensive outreach and, and engagement, and so, you know, I guess I'm just going to ask, you know, if, if, if my colleagues are supportive of the bill itself, that I, I think that we should move forward today. So I'll just, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion second round? Councilman Coghill.
I'd like to defer to Chris, what you have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember. So, just to add on to some of the statements that Councilmember Warwick had made, right now, we are currently working on formulating a specific guidance for how this would be enforced. That's not to say that we don't have the basics down, it's just, you know, we have to kind of work out what our process is going to be in the future for how to do this. Normally, we would refer to federal guidance for that, but for obvious reasons, there is no federal guidance in this area. So we are looking to other state and municipal governments that are currently doing this, but my sense, in the sense of all the folks that we had in the room, is that this is not going to be materially different from the current provisions that we have regarding disability protections and requests for accommodation. And the current guidance is that any request made for a medical accommodation of any kind cannot interfere with the fundamental duties of the position. And so, anyone who's in a circumstance where they would be not able to perform the fundamental duties of a position because of medicinal marijuana use would not be protected, and so that's not really a concern.
Okay, thanks. Well, I, first, I want to make clear that the people that I was on the phone till midnight last night about this, who had concerns, do not, are not outright opposing this bill. They are not. They are asking for more time so they can go through it. And I know you said you, you put it out to people, but last week after the conversation here at the table, I sent the legislation to the head of the building trades, which represents seventeen or eighteen different trades, plumbers, electricians, you name it, boilermakers, none of them have, none of them had seen it, none of them have got notice of it. I know you talked to the builders, master builders, and I know that they had, you had spoken with them, and I know they have concerns with it now too, which I thought originally you had said that they were okay with it, but they also have concerns with it. When I say concerns with it, their concern is making sure there's a comfort level in all of the language before we vote on it. And unfortunately, we're going on break. A two-week hold would be probably sufficient. One week was not enough to get everybody up to speed, and, you know, they're all talking to each other. They all have different reasons why, and different questions. We just want to make sure their questions get answered before we make, put this into law, and to make sure the implications, whatever they are, and hopefully, they're nothing. I, you know, as well as I do, I was supportive at first, right? I didn't know that, until I went on to find out, like, you know, this may affect their hiring practices. So I think that labor unions have good reason to, not suspicious, but to make sure that all their questions or concerns are answered before we vote on this. So, again, they're not opposed in the spirit of it. They, they practice this every day, I will tell you, and they just want to make sure it doesn't affect their long-term hiring practices or liability issues. I mean, I heard, I can't even begin to tell you the different reasons I've heard, but there was four or five different reasons at least, and I couldn't answer the questions. I'm not an attorney, so, you know, they had a week to look at it, wasn't enough as far as they were concerned or I'm concerned, and that's why I'm asking for a six-week hold, so we could vet it out properly. In the end, I'd like to get you together with all the building trades, and, you know, you have those discussions personally with them. I don't know why they didn't happen. All I do know is that they didn't get the legislation, and maybe they should have been proactive and called you if they received it, but I'm sure you have record as to who you sent the legislation to. Okay, so you sent it to all the building trades?
I'm not going to name names.
Okay, okay. Okay, well, the ones.
Yes, I sent it to leadership, labor leadership, I'll say that. And I also had a conversation last week when we held for one week for asking for a hold, and I held for a week.
I know, I know, and we are happy to have that week to look at.
And it's a very short bill, and there was ample opportunity to read it, understand it, contact me, ask questions.
So even for my purposes, you say you sent it to labor leadership. There's a lot of labor leadership. It depends if we're talking about the Master Builders Guild, or we're talking about the, you know, the various amount of unions, the building trades, so I'm not sure who they are. All I do know is they told me they didn't receive it until I sent it to them last week. When I say "they," I mean, I'm talking about sixteen, seventeen people that, trade unions that helped build our city. And, and again, this is really about safety for them. They want to make sure that this bill doesn't affect their hiring practices, liability, and safety. That's what's most important to them. At this point, they're not at a comfort level. I, I think they could probably get there if you sat down with them, like, we, we talked about it, and, you know, I can't say for sure, but certainly, I'm not prepared to vote on this today, and the comfort level is just not there at this point, so. So I'd like to make a motion to hold for six weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of a six-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Can we get a, can we get a vote call?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
No.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. Mosley. Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
No.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Strasburger Chair.
Aye.
Six ayes, three noes. Uh, we, bill will be held for six weeks. Thank you very much. That moves us on to Bill 727.
Bill 727, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Grace Arboree in an amount not to exceed $3,075 over one year in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to her vehicle from an intersectional accident with a city police vehicle on May 19th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of Bill 727, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 728.
Bill 728, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Sherman Hopson and his attorney Villanova Law Offices, PC, for a single payment in 2024 in an amount not to exceed $75,000 in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 728, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 729.
Bill 729, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Duquesne Light Company in an amount not to exceed $3,097.83 over one year in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to light pole near 2420 Lindell Street from a city ES vehicle on August 18th, 2023.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 729, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 730.
Bill 730, resolution authorizing the issuance of eight warrants with the total sum of $45,000. It is further understood and agreed that the payment schedule of the total settlement amount shall be as follows. $4,050 payable to Kelly Angel, $4,050 payable to Doron Lewis, $4,050 payable to Kelly Angel as guardian of Shawde Shree Angel, $4,050 payable to Kylie McNary Miners Master Trust, $4,050 payable to Kamaya McNary Miners Master Trust, $4,050 payable to India McNary Miners Master Trust, $4,050 payable to Kalea Angel Miners Master Trust, $16,650 payable to O'Brien Coleman &amp; Wright LLC in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania, payable over one year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Just briefly, again, want to thank the law department for briefing us on all of these. These have been, briefings have been really helpful, and just want to thank you guys.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 730, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 731.
Bill 731, resolution further amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27th, 2021, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2022 capital budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by reducing Bridge Preservation and Restoration Fund by $120,000 and increasing 28th Street Bridge by $120,000.
To approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 731, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 732.
Bill 732, resolution amending Resolution 200 of 2024, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Pittsburgh Futures for professional services relating to leadership development training by increasing the authorized spend by $54,000 for a new total not to exceed cost of $261,336.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion, Councilman Charland.
Yeah, again, I'm curious, if anyone's here to talk about this, what we're doing here, or if any of the members know.
Patrick out there, he's raising his hand.
It.
Looks like, yeah, we had Director Pollock, but, yeah, Chief Cornell.
Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer.
And I link an Assistant Director in OBI.
So this would be an amendment to an existing contract with Pittsburgh Futures. We have used work with this organization for, you know, the years that the administration has been in office, to do a lot of leadership training work, a lot of learning line work, and what this amendment would do would add $54,000 to finish out the scope through the rest of this year. When we worked on the budget last year, we had a known idea of what the budget for this program would, would be, and then as we got into the beginning of this year, there has been a lot of work done in the Southern Hilltops, a learning line that we've been working through, and that kind of increased the scope from what we anticipated and expected.
So, who's receiving these leadership, who is receiving leadership development?
Sure, so we have worked through different phases. The mayor's leadership team, the executive team, was in the first cohort. Again, this was grant-funded from the beginning, and it's since expanded into several additional years of work. At this point, directors and assistant directors, and in some departments, managers further down the support chain have received some of this. And a lot of this is related to solving to root as to, you know, why issues are coming up, what is the actual problem, and how do we actually resolve it, as opposed to just, next time we'll be better. So, in particular, Director Hornstein has done a lot of work with his team in, in monitoring their safety logs, figuring out why there are injuries occurring, and being able to track and figure out how those numbers can get better, and they have gotten a lot better, bless you.
Okay, a quarter of a million dollars, just, can you tell me how many people have gone through it? Give me a number.
I don't know off the top of my head. I mean, the, the mayor's cabinet is, all the directors, we have twenty-seven cost centers, so probably twenty directors plus assistant directors for each of those groups and supervisors. I can get that number to you.
Okay, yeah, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Any further, Councilwoman Kail Smith?
I'm just curious, is this something that our own personnel department could do?
So we are, it would be more aligned with innovation and performance, with a performance improvement team, and they are directly involved with this and have taken on some of the additional teachings and trainings. I had a training session last fall with the community development team in particular that Pittsburgh Futures did not attend, but they had kind of trained the trainer for our IMP Performance Improvement Team to help out. So they are, other groups are involved with that, yes.
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 732, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative, affirmative recommendation. Thank you. That moves us on to Bill 733.
Bill 733, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of, director of Finance to enter into, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, a lease agreement or agreements with Riza Cafe to utilize a portion of the first floor of the City of Pittsburgh building located at 1555 Broadway Avenue, number 102, to operate a commercial, commercial coffee shop at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve or discussion?
Finally.
Second.
With discussion, Councilman Coghill.
Okay, no, I, I just really wanted to thank Jennifer Olzinger and her team and the administration. This space is in a city-owned building, of course, it's where the Healthy Active Living Center is. We tried a coffee shop there a couple of years ago, didn't quite make it. The new gentleman that's coming in, who's starting it, his father had a very successful coffee shop in Lawrenceville, so he has the experience, he has the backing, and he's excited about it, and I just really wanted to take the time to thank Jennifer and her team for showing the place and putting it out for RFP and all that they did, so, thank you.
Thanks. Congratulations, Councilman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 733, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to invoices. Do I motion for invoices?
So moved.
I'll make one note for invoices, and that is that there are two invoices under parks for fireside events that together total over $5,000. These are separate invoices for separate events. One was for the Fourth of July, one was for Greenfield Glide, and so we do not require a waiver. Any further discussion on invoices? Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Invoices are approved. That moves us on to interdepartmental transfers. Do I have a motion for transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the interdepartmental transfers, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Transfers are approved. That moves us on to P-cards. Do I have a motion for P-cards?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? I'll note for P-cards, the first charge on the list for EMS is for UPMC Education. It does have a note that this is a duplicate charge. EMS is working with the. EMS is working with the vendor to get this charge reversed, so we should see a credit on the P-card report after recess, and our eagle-eyed budget office on council will continue to look out for that and ensure that we get that. The second note for P-cards is, there is one PayPal invoice for this week under Public Safety for Tanya's Catering. This was catering for an all-day training event for the Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention, and there is an invoice attached for this for reference. Any discussion for P-cards?
Just briefly, it's, it's not a major inaccuracy, but as I look through here, there's an event that I see that's miscategorized in Department of Planning. You know, again, I'm very concerned about the accuracy of this P-card process and seeing, you know, inaccuracies in this, you know, doesn't make me feel any better about that. So again, I'll be voting no on, on P-cards, yeah.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion?
I'm, I'm going to vote no on the P-cards, but I'm also trying to figure out what premier choice painting from my district with that, with that invoice is for, so I might want to, before the end of the meeting, I might want to pull that. Do you know what it is?
No.
Okay, thank you, please find out before I, I vote on that. We already voted on, but I might have to bring it back to take that out.
I see. Thank you, Councilwoman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of P-cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
No. Two noes, P-cards are approved. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilperson Warwick.
Newspapers, Bill seven thirty-eight, resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Economic Development's Greenways Trails and Recreation Program for the Shenley Park Connector Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of two hundred fifty thousand dollars with a local match of one hundred twenty-three thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-two cents for a total project cost of three hundred seventy-three thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-two cents for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve, brief discussion?
Is there a second? Councilwoman, Councilperson Warwick.
Yes, so just to clip for anybody in the public who's listening, the, the name is unfortunate. This does not have anything to do with the Monne Oakland Connector, and I've actually requested a name change if that's possible with the, so this is, this is a project to create the bike connection over the Anderson Bridge into, you know, through Shenley Park into South Oakland, so that, that's my understanding of looking at the map, and I don't know if anyone else has questions.
Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Now, I just want to say, I've been noticing a lot of the changes in Shenley Park, and, you know, my kids, growing up, my kids and myself, I grew up on Fifth Avenue, that was our park, so I love seeing some of the things that are happening, and especially with the, the new playground and everything, so I just want to congratulate everybody on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill seven thirty-eight, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill seven seventy-one.
Bill seven seventy-one, resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Finance and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, to enter into certain temporary construction easements on certain properties in the Eighth and Tenth Ward of the city in order to advance the Penn Avenue Reconstruction Phase Two Project. Costs for these temporary construction easements shall not exceed twenty thousand dollars reimbursable at eighty percent.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill seven seventy-one, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill six seventy-nine.
Bill six seventy-nine, resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars for work related to the Wenzel Carnahan Reconstruction Project.
I have an amendment for this one, so.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion, Councilwoman, yeah, motion.
Yeah, motion to amend.
Second.
Discussion on the amendment.
It's just a slight change in cost from sixteen thousand five hundred to twenty thousand nine hundred.
Oh, you're adding money, okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, yeah, Councilman Cockeill.
So this is, this is adding money, and I'm talking to you, Councilwoman Kail Smith, I think this is your district, actually, even though it's my district.
It's my district, but he lives on the street, so right up above, that's where his district starts.
So is this to continue what they didn't do, do you know, or is this just a cover overdraft?
Interrogatory.
Yes, sorry about that.
Yeah, my understanding is that they were supposed to finish some of the Wenzel Avenue project.
Right, I mean, it looks like hell there, yeah. Could we please, yes.
Yeah, do you want to come talk about? If he says something different, we'll throw him off with the table. I have that photo of you from yesterday, just saying that.
Good morning, everybody, I'm Jeff Scalick, I'm the deputy director for Domi. Yes, this warrant is for, is related for us to clean up the paperwork and get this project closed out on the books. We need some more additional funding, honestly, it ran through PennDOT, so we do pay for PennDOT's time, you know, their staff to help us administer the grant and the program.
Now, Jeff, I was under the impression that those awful steps that I drive by every day, that jet out into the roadway, and, you know, that they were going to be part of that project, you know, was that never intended to be part of the project? I remember the old Domi director.
Karina.
Karina Ricks, right, right. I thought that this was like.
We couldn't get it approved, the money was more for the intersection.
Yeah, the intersection looks great, I mean, that's, that's all done, it looks great, but there's just that set of steps there that, like, something, now there's property rights there, I think, there's different things, but the railing at least, you know, we have a wooden railing that just looks like hell.
We'll have to look at that outside of this.
Yeah, okay, I understand, so, all right, that's all. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bills, let's see, amendment.
I just want to say.
The, the bill is amended, pardon, the bill is amended, six seventy-nine, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, thank you very much. The Newspapers, Bill seven thirty-four.
Bill seven thirty-four, resolution amending resolution one twenty-seven of two thousand twenty-three, which provide, provided for a reimbursement agreement or agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in connection with PennDOT's transportation alternatives set aside in the city's Safe Routes to Schools Program for costs associated with the preliminary engineering and construction phases of the project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed three hundred forty-five thousand dollars and increase of two hundred twenty thousand dollars from the previously executed agreement for costs associated with the preliminary engineering and construction phases of the project, federally reimbursable at one hundred percent, and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed zero dollars.
Motion to approve?
Oh, sorry. Motion to approve.
For a second, discussion? Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I always like to hear us talk about safe routes to school, director, so do you want to kind of give us a little more detail about the projects?
Sure, this is, this is a reimbursement agreement for traffic calming improvements that are happening in schools in Hazelwood, Homewood, and Arlington. This project is a hundred percent federal funds that is going to go through the PennDOT process. The projects are identified as Pittsburgh Arlington, pre-K through eight, Propel, Hazelwood, K through eight, and Fayazon, Fayazon, K through five, Homewood. They all include improvements with like speedhumps, crosswalks, and upgrades to the crosswalk, to the sidewalks, I'm sorry.
Great.
So those are the three that are identified for using this money.
Great, I appreciate that. Those, if I may, more specifics on the crosswalks, are those just zebra striping, are we using raised crosswalks near school?
Right now, these ones are not raised, they're going to be flush with those.
Let's see, what are those called officially, they're like, they're not actually called raised, they're called something like table, is it a table?
They're speed tables, we wouldn't do speed tables on this one, but we could look at that for other projects coming up.
Mm-hmm, I mean, I'm glad we're getting started with this, I do feel like that the calming implementation, the actual kind of things that we're implementing could actually be more aggressively calming.
Yeah.
Which sounds like an oxymoron, but that they're, you know, they, they don't slow people down enough.
And this is the first time we've received this type of money through PennDOT. It's going very well, so we're going to look to keep on continuing the program using federal funds.
Okay, great, so, yeah, I think I'm hearing some kind of affirmation from other council members, too. I think other places are doing a really good job of slowing cars down and making streets safe near schools. I'll just say, I'm obviously supportive here, really glad there are federal funds for this purpose, we should be more aggressive at applying for those grants as well, more aggressive about the kinds of technologies or techniques we're using to slow cars down, and I'll also point out that while we still do have a lot of walk shed students for our K through fives or K through eights, which are being focused here, rightfully so, because, you know, five-year-olds are walking to school, but that many of our kids aren't walkers to their schools, and so they are at bus stops wherever in the neighborhood is that they're going to and from, right? For example, on the edge of my district, officially in District Nine, Friendship Montessori is a magnet school. Dilworth in my district is a magnet school, so the children aren't, not all the student body are walking to the school, and so where are, where are their bus stops? So especially where, and I know those bus stops change, but not significantly from year to year, so, you know, I think it's, we've talked to, about this with the previous administration, this administration, and many Domi directors, but where are our, you know, five and six and seven-year-olds going to their bus stops, and are those routes safe, I think, is an important addition to just the immediate, really, we're only doing the streets adjacent to the school so far, and again, so what about all of the intersections in those walk sheds, but also what about the routes to high-frequency school buses, especially for the younger kids?
We have a person through Domi, Harriet, who is wonderful, she is our Safe Routes to School Coordinator, she is looking at, and we're also looking at when the buses get to the school, do we need to create maybe like a one-lane choker to get buses and people in and then out? So we are looking at things like that, too, okay?
Yeah, it can be mayhem, especially at a K through five, right? But so you not only have buses, you have a lot of parents who, because they're not comfortable with the way their kids have to get to their bus stops or the busing routes, et cetera, are driving to the school with their kids, and so you've got kids that are walking, kids that are being driven, and the cars and the parents driving those cars to contend with, and where is that, near the schools and then school buses? So just again, for the, for the listening public, not so that we're not picturing that, you know, a school where just a hundred percent of the kids are walking to school by any means. Thank you, I appreciate that, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Charlin, followed by Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you for being here. First of all, Arlington's my district, so I, I know some of the work that we've been doing up there. I love to hear something that's a hundred percent federal funded. My, my question to you is kind of on the, the broader scope of things. How do we, how do we get more of these, these, this grant funding? How do we be more aggressive in going after free money?
So for this program, it's really new, having a Safe Routes to School Coordinator. We are working with the local PennDOT, PennDOT District Eleven, and we actually have a person that's assigned from District Eleven to work with Domi, to get them more informed of like, like how we live, how we navigate our streets, what we do, and they're, they're, they have a buy-in with us right now, they see what we're doing. When we spend money and have great projects like this, they're going to help us and advocate for us to receive more money as long as we're able to deliver projects, and it's all a hundred percent federal, so.
I, I love that, and, you know, I, both, all the council members, but I know Councilwoman Warwick and I have talked a lot about how important traffic calming is and traffic calming in specific locations. It is vitally important to me that I get some traffic calming next to, to parks, and that's something that we've talked about. Is there a Safe Route to Parks program?
Yeah, yeah, something we could look at, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, that, that, that stuff is so crucially important. I, I just, I worry that there are grants out there that we are not applying for, not taking advantage of. I, I tell the story about last year, talking to Mike Maylock about a Green Light Go grant that we, we'd originally funded the project, the project came out of the budget, and then I talked to Mike and I was like, how do we, how do we get the money back in the budget? And he's like, well, instead of fully funding the project, why don't you just put in a fifth of the cost of it, and then we can go after the Green Light Go grant? I'm like, why aren't we doing that all the time? Why aren't all of our, our lights a fifth of the cost that they should be? You know, anything that there's free money out there for, we should be taking advantage of, and I, I want to encourage your department and all departments, get that free money, so, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you. I want to encourage you to get the free money, too. Let's stop giving away so much of our money. But I did want to thank you and, and everyone at Domi for the work that they do, but I, I want to give a shout out to you and to Yon, because you've been attending a lot of meetings for us, and it's just the way you interact with everyone, it's a calming sense, and, and I just want to say, I feel like Domi is so challenged, because every time somebody can't settle a problem like in, on Grandview, if it's a speeding issue and if the, it's not something the police can do, everybody cries for Domi to do, increase traffic calming. And so you, the requests that you have are tremendous, and I think that trying to balance that so no part of the city feels forgotten is, is challenging, but I do want to thank you for, for the work that you've been doing in, in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill seven thirty-four, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill seven thirty-five.
Bill seven thirty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Department of Community and Economic Development's Multimodal Transportation Fund for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of seven thousand three hundred, sorry, seven hundred thirty-five thousand twenty-six dollars to support the Critical Sidewalk Gap Program.
Motion to approve, brief discussion?
Is there a second? Councilperson Warwick.
Just wondering, do we know which projects we're going to do with this yet, or?
Eight dollars. So this is a hundred percent state dollars, and the projects are on Heron Avenue in the Hill District, it's from Center Avenue, Seventh, Center Avenue to Boulevard of the Allies, and this will be sidewalk improvements on both sides, and on Laramore Avenue, from the Laramore Avenue Bridge to Carver Street, and it's also sidewalk improvement on both sides.
Have sidewalks gotten more expensive? I just know.
Everything has, yes.
Yeah, because I, I know that there was a sidewalk project, it was about half a mile on one side, and now I've got one that's significantly shorter, significantly shorter, and it's almost as much money.
Yeah, and also it depends on where we bid that money through, like if it's through a PennDOT project, of course, more volume, you usually get better rates, so if it's a bigger project, you usually get better rates, and sometimes it's smaller.
Deputy Director, can you speak?
Well, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
If it's a bigger project, like through a PennDOT oversight, it's more volume, so we usually get better rates that way.
Any, so, Councilwoman Kail Smith?
Yeah, I just wonder how the projects are selected.
This one, this Critical Sidewalk, this is a program that we have, we have a project manager in-house that selects the, the projects, and it goes according to schools, bus stops, and the condition of the, of the sidewalks, there's like a whole index that we do use.
So I'm curious, because I, I think I may have talked to somebody, someone in Domi about this, but in Sheridan, we did those sidewalks, all, in, in very different, in different locations in Sheridan, but some of them were in front of properties that are, you know, absentee landlords, and, and I, we discussed, I said I felt like we're, we're helping absentee landlords doing things that they should be doing and be responsible for, but I understand the need for it, but then when I brought up that there's also the property that is owned by Christie and Joey Porter that have, they have people contract with the state, it's a state contract, public dollars, for about a hundred people with disabilities in their facilities, they purchased four buildings in Sheridan, and there was a, I'll tell you, there was a museum there, the Carpalas Museum in between there, which was also public, but they're, they're closing their doors because we challenged their, their nonprofit status, that has nothing to do with you, but, but now that, that museum is closing, which was free to the public, and, because they're just not going to deal with us. And so then, the four buildings still remain, and that's where a lot of people with a lot of disabilities and, and the state contractor are. I think there's about a hundred people that are supposed to stay there. It's also a place where they have programs for the youth and all sorts of things, but they weren't eligible to even get any help for their, their sidewalks. And they have the ability to raise the money, so I think that's not the concern, but the concern is, are we, is that how? that's not the concern. But the concern is, are we, is that how we're guiding this? Because if we're, if we're going to judge it on they have the amount of money, or they don't have the money, or the ability to pay, then we should be holding their landlords accountable for the sidewalks that we're, we're installing. And I know this is probably something, a lot to discuss, but I just want to put that out there a little bit, because I'm going to talk about it a little bit more.
Yeah, I was like, that's another bill that's coming up that we could discuss for that program.
That one, okay. That's one, if it was part of this-
It's today, yeah. It's not part of this, but that's going to come up today, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll just say my comments go forward, okay?
Okay.
I don't have to say it all over again. But I will say that it's something that I do want to know what we're, how we're considering this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 735, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 736.
Bill 736, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Department of Community and Economic Development's Multimodal Transportation Fund for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $74,147 to support the Second Avenue Connector Project.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Councilwoman Charlin.
What's, what's the Second Avenue Connection Project?
It's a connection for our bike trail network by connecting 10th Street Bridge to the Eliza Furnace Trail.
Well, that's a good connection.
That's what I thought it was. Cool. Support of that.
Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill?
Outside my district. Yeah, it's not really related to the bill, Jeff, but it seems like you're having a lot of success getting the grants. Did we put another grant writer on for, for you last year, or?
We're doing that well.
Yeah, is that right? Good, yeah, that's great. Is it, uh?
Mayor's Office helps with us, and we have our team here. Yeah, we have, as you can see, there's a lot of-
Yeah, yeah, keep bringing in. It's all good stuff. Thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 736, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 737.
Bill 737, resolution providing for a supplemental agreement or agreements with SAI Consulting Engineers, Inc., for costs associated with the CBD Signals Phase Four project, providing for payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $575,887.64, an increase of $51,148.31 from the previously executed agreement as previously authorized by Resolution 395 of 2022.
Motion to approve brief discussion?
Your second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just, what, what is CBD?
Sure, these are central business district signals.
Okay.
And I do have the locations, if you'd like to hear them. They are Forbes and Ross, Second and Municipal Courts, Second and Manor, Penn and 12th, Penn and 16th, Bedford and Washington, Bedford and Crawford, and Crawford and Center.
Further discussion? Councilperson Charlin.
So for projects like this, why, why was this not a Green Light Go project?
We were able to get other money to, to do more work, to get more grants. Yeah, we were pretty fortunate. This is actually our fourth time receiving this type of money. Uh, that's why it's called CBD Signals Phase Four. And this is more just for CBD areas in the city.
So this is from someone else?
This is through PennDOT.
Through PennDOT, okay. Okay, gotcha. I, I missed that.
And this will be an 80/20 split, 80% federal, 20% local.
Sick. All right, great. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I did have a question. This is part of signal phasing and timing in the Central Business District, correct?
Yes.
And when it's all completed, and it's all fits together, is this going to help with not only facilitation of, you know, of drivers so that they're not like, getting frustrated and trying to beat the light, and, you know, will, was it, will it also help with biker and pedestrian safety?
It will. We'll have, this upgrades the whole entire signal system for pedestrians and bikers also. So if there's an event at PPG and people are leaving, and there's 20-some thousand people, we'll be able to coordinate. It'll be like a smart, we'll have smarts, signals and smart timing for those.
Yeah. I just saw the news this weekend, like, two separate incidents of people on bicycles getting hit. One of them was a hit-and-run downtown, lots of events happening downtown Picklesburg and all that. And I was really distressed to hear that, you know, even in a downtown area where like, sometimes traffic isn't able to travel that fast, that there were two, just separate incidents just this weekend. So glad to see that this is part of a whole, you know, set of, set of projects to be able to address that. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So it says Traffic Control System, right?
Mm-hmm.
In previous projects and in previous discussions at the table around Central Business District, but also other corridors in the city, like in my district, the Baum Center Corridor has a timing technology that was based on the little kind of like microwave, the like white squares that you can see on the arms.
Like a suitcase.
Yeah, and they just kind of detect the flow and then moderate the flow of traffic so that it kind of increases the flow by 20 to 30%. But really, we had data showing that pedestrians and bicyclists were safer, especially pedestrians. We'd had a lot of accidents and death, and some fatalities on Baum. And then after the implementation, I think it's SureTrack, it's kept the traffic flowing, but slower. So that there was a reduction in injuries. And so I'm not hearing that kind of discussion here. So while I appreciate the discussion about how routing, but also increasing safety, can you talk about how we have kind of different technologies in different places?
Yeah, I have to actually have our municipal traffic engineer really go into more detail than that. He's definitely-
Okay, great, yeah, we can-
But this is more related by the infrastructure also. So this is more like buying the pools, buying the lights, like buying technology. Like I said, our municipal traffic engineer will be able to talk to you more about-
That'd be great. Yeah, we can do it at another time. It doesn't have to be, I'm supportive of this bill. But I do think there's a bigger question of like, there had been a vision painted for council many years ago of kind of having like a traffic control center for the whole city kind of thing, and-
And we're still working on that.
Okay, so that's, that's still on the table.
It is.
Got it. And then kind of what we're, I'm sure this, the industry has evolved since we first adopted SureTrack, which was nearly 10 years ago.
Oh, yeah.
Right? And so I feel like people are really comfortable on it, on the, it like runs the length of Baum Boulevard, which really needed that traffic calming. And, and then also loops around a little bit of Bigelow, in one continuous corridor. And so it was really helpful. But, so are we not going to use the technology? Are there other technologies out there now? So again, this will be my questions. Again, supportive today, we don't need to have that discussion today, but give me, yeah, just giving you a heads up. So I appreciate that. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 737, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 739.
Bill 739, resolution amending Resolution 559 of 2020, providing for a reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design, final design and right-of-way phases of the 28th Street Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $2,830,000, an increase of $1,610,000 from the previously executed agreement for costs associated with the preliminary engineering, final design and right-of-way phases of the project reimbursable at 95%, and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed four, or not to exceed $500, $5,500, an increase of $4,000 from the previously executed agreement.
Motion to approve?
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 739, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 740.
Bill 740, resolution providing for a reimbursement agreement or agreements with the prelim, with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design, final design, right-of-way and partial construction phases of the Allegheny River Green Boulevard Project, and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $2,500,000, reimbursable at 80%, and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs at a cost not, at a cost to the city of Pittsburgh not to exceed $30,000.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Councilwoman Gross.
Just very briefly, so happy to see this project.
I know.
After, like, just to acknowledge more than 12 years of advocacy from so many community organizations in the neighboring neighborhoods. So, well done, and thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Councilwoman, and DOMI, and everyone.
Yes.
Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 740, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 741.
Bill 741, resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to accept a donation from Carnegie Mellon University in the amount of $47,300 to reimburse the city for paving and stripping the parking lot on Morewood Avenue near Fifth Avenue, and further amending Resolution Number 857 of 2023, effective December 27, 2023, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2024 Capital Budget, the Proposed 2024 Community Development Program and the 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Street Resurfacing by $47,300."
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second with discussion.
With discussion, Councilman Coghill.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, you said stripping, it's striping.
Striping, sorry.
Yeah, okay, that's, I just wanted to clear that. But, and Jeff, what, so, so CMU, I guess this is Madam Chair's district, right? So CMU is giving us a donation, I guess, because the aesthetics, what they have near them, and we gladly accept it and pay for it and get it done, is that right?
What it's for is to create bike lanes and pedestrian safety improvements. This will be on Moorhead Avenue between Fifth and Forbes. So this will be making it safer for people to walk and bike.
Okay, just curious. Thanks.
I, I do have a question, though, because, first of all, thrilled to see this happen. Further improvements are, are coming when we can realign the intersection and actually replace the signals. But for now, it's much, much safer, even in the interim. And, but this mentions the parking lot. Did, did our crews take care of the bike lanes and then, and the striping, and then also do a parking lot? And this is a reimbursement for that?
Yeah, so what we do is, we actually pave the area first, so then we put down the new striping and the new bike lanes. It's on new, clean asphalt.
I see.
So this pays for everything.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
I'm going to abstain, just because I want to ask you something, but I'll do it later. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of Bill 741, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 742.
Bill 742, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for maintenance obligations of facilities on Butler Street. This resolution serves to authorize only the agreement or agreements at no cost to the city of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Dr. Skellican, can you speak to these, are there negotiations around this co-op? Or is it going to change at all from what has been agreed upon in the past for Butler Street?
No, this is, this is different than, this is, so PennDOT is putting together a plan right now to decrease the width of the Butler Street, and they're putting up barriers. And this will be able to help us create our, our Allegheny Green Boulevard project. So we need this legislation to work with PennDOT to go into agreement for that project. Because this will be the whole connector, so this way we could do our project.
I am, you know, I have standing meetings with DOMI every month, and we have something like a four-page written memo of topics. And this one has not been on it. And there again, has been something like 10 years of work. Literally, the community funded its own street skate plan with traffic calming for Lawrenceville and Butler Street. And as I've put in multiple budget capital requests to execute parts of that plan, like narrowing at 43rd Street, by your house cinema, I, I would like briefing on how this complies with that one. That, I cannot vote to authorize you all to do a cooperative agreement that is not inclusive of the community's requests.
You do that.
Okay. What happens if we don't vote for this until after recess?
It's not on time.
It's totally fine. Okay. I'll motion to hold five weeks then.
Motion is seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 742 will be held five weeks.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Bill 743.
Bill 743, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership for Planting and Maintenance Obligations of Facilities on Smithfield Street between Forbes Avenue and Sixth Street. This resolution serves to authorize only the agreement or agreements at no cost to the city of Pittsburgh.
Motion?
Oh, motion to approve, sorry.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 744.
Bill 744, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IV, Public Places and Property, Article I, Public Right-of-Way, Chapter 417, Pavement Protection, Section 417.08, Sidewalk and Curb Repair Program, to extend the pilot program by four months through the end of the 2024 construction season.
Uh, motion to approve brief discussion?
Second. Discussion, Councilwoman?
So is this the program where we're paying and then getting reimbursed?
It is, yes.
Okay. And then, and then, yeah, is, is, are, are we getting reimbursed? I mean, is that, okay.
We are. Can we close? Stephanie Gagny up to the-
Sure.
Hi, Stephanie Gagny, Management Analyst with the Office of Management and Budget. Yes, just as a reminder, this was a pilot program that you all authorized last year. So the goal of this is to help homeowners replace their sidewalks if they are an owner occupant for a discounted rate. And we're also offering payment plans. The goal of this is to, we have 1,300 sidewalks in the city. That's a lot of, 1,300 miles, sorry, of sidewalk in the city. And the goal of this is to make sure that we have passable sidewalks, so folks can get around, kids can get to school safely. So yes, we are hoping to extend this just through the end of construction season, so we can take all of our learnings from the past two years. And if we'd like to create a permanent program, can do so with all of the relevant information.
Okay, so Councilwoman Kail Smith, followed by Councilwoman Charlin.
Thank you. Just, so, we are getting reimbursed from the side. This is the program that I talked about, that we're doing some of the sidewalks in Sheridan, that was the one before. So we are getting reimbursed. And how are we collecting that?
So we do outreach to the homeowners or landlords, whatever the case they may be, and have them apply for the program. So when they apply for the program, they're able to enter based on income. If they're eligible for discounts, they can opt into that. If they're not eligible for discounts, they can still opt into the payment plan. So we've been doing outreach, and then we will have PLI follow-up from the enforcement end if we don't hear back, and they're able to cite the properties.
And so you don't, so have there been any that you haven't heard back from?
Yeah, so we've had to send PLI out to cite some of those properties. And so that's something we're working on with that.
Yeah. So that's the part that, that's frustrating to me. So then you do your part, the next group comes in, they do their part, but yet the properties still sit there. And so that's a whole nother subject, so I'm not going to bring it up with you now. But that's part of my frustration, is that I'm feeling like we're taking care of property for people that aren't taking care of the property. And so our residents have to live next to that. And meanwhile, but if they're, they're reimbursing you and paying for that, that's good to know. But now that we know that they can respond to some stuff, maybe we should reach out a little bit further to get them, you know, fix up their properties as well. Because even though it's great that we're doing this for, and I love how everybody comes to the table and says, well, council authorizes, or council votes, well, council can also unauthorized things. So I just want to make sure that that's, we can also take money away. So I just want to make sure people understand. And I, because I'm hesitant to vote for stuff, and then you say, well, council voted for it. But, but I do understand what you're, I appreciate the, the reminder. But just so you know, for me, my concern has always been that, that we leave these properties and these, and people living next to this, it, it's, to me, it's just inhumane. And these are things that we should be taking care of. But I'm not going to preach to you because you're DOMI and your sidewalks, and the sidewalks look great that you did put in, so thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Charlin?
Uh, yeah, thank you. So I, I know that council did authorize this last year, and I was a staffer when that happened. I, I'm curious, so we're in two neighborhoods right now, right? If I remember correctly?
So last year, yes, we did-
So last year, yes, we did two neighborhoods, um, in Sheridan and then in Homewood. Um, and this year, it's kind of more spread out. Um, so we're working with Domi from their pre-planned sidewalk, um, programs to, uh, so it's kind of various and all around the city. And those, um, sidewalk projects that we have in our first batch, I would say, um, we have briefed the council members whose districts those are in.
So when, when you say the pre-planned programs from, from Domi, what does that mean? I, I'm not sure I understand that.
Sure. So this year, um, we are partnering with the project manager for the Critical Sidewalks Gap Program. So that program focuses on sidewalk gaps as well as pre-existing sidewalk that's in bad condition. Um, so we are working with them because they had already identified a bunch of different projects, just to simplify the process through the end of the pilot, so that we can kind of learn what works and what doesn't work.
Okay, and what are we, um, what is, what are we able to charge for a sidewalk? What, what is the difference between what we charge and what going to a contractor would be?
Yeah, so for this past season and last year, we were charging $75 per square yard, um, which we actually realize is a little bit on the low end with prices soaring. It's really more around $200 to $300 for the actual cost of work. Um, so we have that on the low end, um, and that's something we've learned. Um, so we're charging that, and then depending on the area median income of the homeowner, um, we can kind of discount based on that, and again, they're all eligible for a five-year payment plan.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'm excited to see where this program expands. Uh, as I've told everyone else here, we did a listening tour when we first came into office. Sidewalks were, um, something that we talked about, one of the few things that came up in every one of our neighborhoods, so, um, however we can help out, I'm excited to hear about, uh, future plans here.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 744, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 745.
Bill 745, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works and/or the Director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement, agreements, and/or amendments with the Audubon Society of Boston, Pennsylvania for the purpose of funding Southside Park projects administered by the Friends of Southside Park at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 745, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 746.
Bill 746, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works, the Director of the Department of Finance, and/or the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement, agreements, and/or amendments with Crown Castle for the purpose of cabling and fiber optics installation on city property at and/or near Highland Park at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 746, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, Bill 747.
Bill 747, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with the United States Forest Service for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds from the Inflation Reduction Act in the amount of $1 million to support equitable street tree efforts in certain census tracts.
Motion to approve.
Second with discussion.
With discussion, Councilwoman?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so where does this money going, is it going into our? Do you know if it's going into our department? Do you wanna come to the table? I'm hoping it's going to Lisa Choffey, who struggles every day to, to maintain our trees.
Chris Hartstein, Director of Public Works. Yeah, so this funding does come to the city. Um, it is exactly like it said, it's, um, uh, street tree plantings and maintenance in, um, neighborhoods of need. We, it is in support of our, um, equitable canopy plan that Lisa Choffey in our Forestry Division has, um, been working with partners in the state and the local level to create. Um, so we've mapped out, um, where there's lacking of canopy against, uh, neighborhoods in need where it's needed most. So this funding helps support planting trees in those neighborhoods.
So does the money go to organizations, then?
The money goes to the planting of trees. There will be...
But who's planting those trees?
Um, our partners, so the...
So it'll go to the organizations?
Yes, um, it'll go to those partners. It also funds a position, um, in Forestry Division that is a community forester, so that'll be someone that coordinates with local organizations about the types of trees they would wanna see where exactly, um, in their neighborhoods the, the need would be best met.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna say I have some concerns about some of the organizations receiving the funding. I think that they recently planted some trees in my district, and they're trying to get the firefighters and/or DPW and everyone else to water the trees that they plant, that they get the money for. And so to me, that's an issue. It's like, if you're gonna plant a tree, watering sure as heck comes with it, and you should know that by now, or don't plant the trees, and don't have an organization that plants trees. So to me, that's, that's one of the things they did up in Elliot, I can tell you. And, I mean, we love our trees, and we love seeing, and we definitely need our tree canopy replaced in our district, or, I mean, we're losing a lot of, I think we lost the most tree canopy than any other part of the city in District Two. And so I know that we need, need that, but at the same ti, and that we also have the most landslide, so definitely a correlation between them. But I would say that some of these organizations, I, I would wanna know who's receiving these dollars and what's expected of them. Other than planting trees, are they main, helping to maintain? Are they helping to water, to make sure that at least get a good start? Um, I mean, there's a whole, there's a whole page, Facebook page about it, and about how they didn't water the trees. And they're asking, they're tagging me, "Can I get the trees watered?" And so it's like, I mean, I'm thinking, somebody should've watered the darn trees, or had some plan for watering the trees. I mean, they had received, I believe, $8 million for trees, and then now this is, this, this funding coming forward here. And so I think it's gonna start making me put a little focus on what, what their organizations are doing, and a little bit of, um, looking into, you know, making sure that they're not, they're, they filed their 990s, making sure that they're five, current with their 501(c)(3) statuses, and making sure that they're adhering to the things that we'd want them to adhere to, and that they should be doing legally. So for, I'll, I'll vote for this, but I'm gonna say, I'm gonna really start talking a little bit more about it and start watching a little bit more about what's going on. 'Cause I also don't see them doing a lot with engaging council. I say, what I see them doing is going around council. And if that's what they think they're gonna do every time we give them money, then I'm gonna advocate for us not to be, be their champion for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 747, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative, was that, no, one no? Sorry, just wanna capture it. Aye. Aye, okay, thank you, just, I couldn't quite hear. Uh, affirmative recommendation.
I couldn't either, see, I'm so done with them watching.
That moves us on to, thank you, Director. That moves us on to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilperson Charlin.
Bill 714, resolution amending Resolution 148 of 2023, authorizing the mayor and the Commission on Human Relations to expand the agreement and agreements with Ruder Law for legal services related to the enforcement of City Code Chapter 659.03, unlawful housing practices by increasing the approved amount by $50,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $175,000 over five years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of, of Bill 714, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. But that moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilwoman Wilson.
Bill 777, resolution further amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, effective January 1st, 2019, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving the 2017 Through 2022 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Birmingham Foundation by $13,000 and Sheridan United Methodist Church by $500, and Increasing Elliott West End Athletic Association by $5,000 and the Open Door by $8,500 and Authorize Subsequent Agreements."
Can I get a motion on behalf of Councilwoman Wilson?
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Is there a second? Discussion?
Just brief discussion. I just wanna say, these organizations do so many great things in our district, and, um, you know, the Open Door and the, uh, West End Athletic Association. And so I just wanna thank them for all the work that they do. I would love to take you on a tour and see them, some of the things they do. It's amazing, especially the Open Door. They, I mean, the athletic associations all do great work, but the Open Door is a little bit more unique. They turned a theater into a place for kids, and, um, it's a recreation center. They also have an after-school program, or a preschool program connected to. It's the church and, and, and the, um, association are together. But Dave Carver is the pastor who taught me all about Save Darfur and some of the things, he's really involved in some amazing things. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 777, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, that moves us on to new papers, Bill 748.
Bill 748, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with agencies to provide supportive services related to the Home ARP program for a total not to exceed $200,000.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 748, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 749.
Bill 749, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Aubrell for services relating to non-congregate shelter services related to the Home ARP program for a total not to exceed $1,500,000.
Motion to hold.
Second.
Second.
Uh, so, uh, just discussion here, I've met with Aubrell, this is coming to my district, and, um, I, I appreciate Aubrell taking the time to talk to us about this, but they haven't talked to the community at all yet. Uh, so we are scheduling meetings to make sure that, um, that other folks know what's going on in Allentown. Um, so I would like to hold this until after recess.
Motion to hold six weeks.
Six weeks, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of a six-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held for six weeks. That moves us on to Bill 750.
Bill 750, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission for the purpose of receiving grant funds in the amount of $25,000 to develop revised historic guidelines in the Mexican War Street's historic district. The grant requires a match from the City of Pittsburgh in the amount of $12,500 for the stated purpose for a total project cost of $37,500.
Can I get a motion?
Second.
Discussion?
I was still thinking about the last bill. Did you, are you asking me?
Somebody made the motion, though.
Yeah, it's Bill 750. Is there any discussion on Bill 750? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 750, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, that moves us on to Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services Committee chaired by Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Bill 779, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into an agreement or agreements with New Sunrise for the management and dispersment of grassroots and small-scale investments for the City of Pittsburgh's Food Justice Fund for a sum not to exceed $1,650,000 through December 31st, 2026, and for the payment of the costs thereof.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Uh, discussion, Councilwoman.
We call everyone to the table. Do you wanna come to the table? It's a little bit like driving with me the other day, huh? Sorry.
All good, thank you.
Do you wanna introduce yourself for the public? The microphone's right in front of you, you're good.
Uh, thank you. I am Gabriel McMorland, and I am the Program Coordinator for the Food Justice Fund Program.
Thank you, and I do wanna say that we went driving around my district the other day and had a good old time, so I wanna thank you very much for, for going all around to see, um, all the different things that we had in our district in terms of the, um, different gardens and places that we wanna put some things. Do you wanna give us a little synopsis about this bill? Is there anything you wanna say?
Yeah, thank you. Um, and also for everyone else, like, I, I would love to go on a tour of every council district, um, so, uh, I'm available. So, what...
We had a, we had a fun time, and I said you were my new Vanda White, 'cause you were in all the photos, and I stayed back.
Uh, it's, yeah, I do like being in photos. So, what this, um, contract, this contract will do a couple things. So, big picture, um, one and a half million dollars of the, uh, Food Justice Fund allocation is to, um, be distributed in amounts from $2,000 up to $75,000 to, um, organizations that will do work to increase food security or strengthen the food system in ways that, um, benefit City of Pittsburgh households and communities, so city residents. And, um, this is all ARPA funds, and one of the things that this contract will accomplish is obligating those funds, so that, um, even though, um, you know, we're, as soon as the contract is finalized, we'll move quickly to open applications, and, um, it will still take, you know, several months from the time applications even close until, uh, a neighborhood organization gets money to do a project that serves residents. But when this contract is approved, then that one and a half million dollars will be obligated. So it'll be, um, it'll meet that federal deadline for, uh, you know, the money doesn't disappear. So that's important. Then, um, one of the way, the way this is gonna work, um, is we'll have, um, an open application process, and then, um, and that'll look sort of like, you know, what you might see from a, um, a foundation. It won't look like it going through the whole procurement process, but it will come back to council, so I'm gonna get to that in a second. So, um, nonprofits, or it could be a neighborhood group represented by a nonprofit as a fiscal sponsor. Um, we know there's some, you know, maybe some congregational groups or some block groups, things like that, doing great work, and they could partner with a nonprofit, um, that's in good standing. So, when all the applications come in, um, then I'm going to, um, New Sunrise as the, uh, award management vendor. We'll make sure everything's complete, make sure we've got like their, um, the right information to know that they're nonprofit in good standing, all that stuff. Then it'll come to me, and I will work with the City Law Department to review every application and, um, screen for eligible expenses to make sure that all of the proposed expenses are ARPA-eligible, so that we're doing it right. Then, um, we've got a, uh, an advisory committee, the Governance Committee, um, that will use a, uh, rubric.
And just, I just wanna interrupt you real quick.
Sorry.
And that group will also come back to council, uh, for final approval. That's what the amendment was that we put in, uh, this week, was that council can look at that, and that we also put in an amendment so that the controller can audit the dollars, so to make sure that the public investment is being spent the way that it should be spent. And so those are the only things, and I wanna, I just, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I wanna say why we've held the bill, why I held the bill for one week, and that was, that was with the intention to make sure that we amended that. And I worked with you and the administration, and with the Director of Argus, um, on putting that forward. And I, I wanna thank my colleagues for their patience with me, but I would, I'll be honest, when everybody came down yesterday, I was livid, because I'm thinking, "You're here for something we're already passing." You know what I mean? So it's like, all you had to do was give me a phone call, so, um, but it was, it was really, um, something that we really wanted to see happen in the first place, to be honest with you. But I do think that this is a broader conversation, that we are getting into a lot of social services on the city level, and we're not able to do the things that the public wants us to do on other, with other things, and including, you know, paving and, you know, tree maintenance and all those sorts of things. And so for me, I think it's a conversation we have to have, and I'm sure the administration's probably having some of those conversations already with the county, and how they're, um, making sure that we get some of these services, uh, paid for by the county, and that these are things that are important to the public. You, you know, having your clean, safe neighborhood's great, but you also need food, housing, and those are things that we, I just think it's a conversation we have to have, instead of piecemealing every... piecemealing everything together, putting a good, comprehensive plan together and putting a sustainable effort forward so that it's not dependent on this one-time ARPA funds that are coming in. So those are things that I really want to make sure that we're, that we're doing. And I know other members probably have some things that they want to say, but I do want to thank, as much as I'm, I'm not real happy with her today, I want to thank Councilwoman Gross for her work on this, and I want to thank Councilwoman Strasburger because they were really also instrumental in, in putting this together and making sure that there were funds for the Food Justice Fund. My, I will say my legislation was, at the very beginning, was to put in farms, north, southeast, west, and central of the city. So the public never has to depend on government to feed them, that they have these farms in every place. It makes me sick after I watched COVID, it was during COVID, and there was a distribution. And I do want to say the food bank does an amazing job getting the food out there to the community. We have tons of people that we're getting boxes to and food to. And, I mean, every single week, there's, there's something in my district now where before there, there wasn't, and so it's a lot. But I want to, I think that part of that is that the, after seeing people turned away, it was so hurtful and so sad to see the whole thing. But I want to acknowledge Giant Eagle and Eaton Park as well because during those times, both of those companies gave a lot to the city to make sure we got through COVID and made sure that food and things were being distributed, distributed throughout the city. And in our district in particular, you know, Giant Eagle really gave a lot to help. But you are going to be the manager, and this New Sunrise will also be managing the contract. But there are two very distinct roles. And so could you just briefly give us a little update on what, on what that is? Because I think that was one of my, my questions is, you know, how is this different? And I want to be honest, Director Vargas gave a great, you know, distinction of, you know, explanation what the distinction is.
Yeah. Thank you. I think that, also, yeah, I agree that there's, I think there is a lot of need for food security and for strengthening our local capacity, whether that's like more urban farming or, you know, more refrigeration in food pantries, what have you. I think that there's a lot of need and demand for that. So I have, I think my role is a lot broader than what New Sunrise's role will be among, well, one thing I'm going to do is I'm going to be managing the relationship with them. But then they, after they, so I'll sort of break it down step by step, but I'll try to be quick. So I'm going to finalize, based on a lot of input from different experts and stakeholders, I'm going to finalize the criteria and the application questions. And then New Sunrise will, you know, I don't know how to make a database and a website and stuff. So they're going to actually post the application online and manage the data.
Even if you knew how to do it, it would probably change next week with this technology.
Exactly, right? So then, once the applications come in, they'll pass the data back and they'll literally give me the applications, then I'll work with our law department. So we, the city, are going to be evaluating the ARPA eligibility. I have a lot of faith in New Sunrise. I think they have a lot of really relevant experience, but we're still, you know, as the city, we're going to be responsible for that. And so we're going to have the final determination over what's eligible. Then I'm going to facilitate the advisory committee's scoring and their group meetings to come up with the recommended projects. And then I'll work with OMB to put that into the form of legislation to bring back to you all for, you know, this legislative process. I'll be back at the table. And.
Is this your first time here at the table?
Yeah. It's a lot more fun having them back and forth instead of just the public comment, you know? I'm sorry, what did you say?
I'll get you a photo.
Oh, yeah. Group photo. So then, the other, oh, the other part of this, in terms of being relevant to the auditing question, technically, so I just want to make sure everyone knows, these are not, I'm all for, I think we should make sure that they're auditable. And these are, you know, we're calling them grants because I think in the, in terms of marketing, that's what makes sense to people, you know, in community groups, they're see grant, oh, I should go apply. But technically, in terms of the ARPA dollars, what's happening is we're contracting New Sunrise, and then they are subcontracting these awardees, these nonprofits, to do work that provides assistance to households and communities in Pittsburgh.
And so here's what I will ask then, will New Sunrise be charged with making sure that those organizations are current with their 501(c)(3)'s? And their, you know, their federal 990s are filed and all that? Okay, that's what I care about.
Yes, 100%.
That's all I care about. I want to make sure everybody's doing things.
Absolutely.
Above board. And for me, I, the biggest thing is I want to see food on people's table. I want to know that they're effective in what they're doing and that's actually yielding, you know, results for the families that are struggling in the, in need of help and depending on us to do this. I don't want to waste $3 million on just sustaining organizations. I want to make sure that that money's delivering what we want, you know, intend for the families. So that, that's it for me. I, because I did ask all my questions, I know there was an RFP, I know that there, that, you know, for New Sunrise and, and they were selected. Do you know, do you want to say anything about their selection?
Yeah. And something I want to say, like if you, when, if you look at the fiscal impact statement, you'll see that there are several.
There are eight that responded correctly.
Yeah, there were eight, and there were, I don't know the correct word for it, but like there were several vendors that are local who all submitted proposals. And, you know, all the local bidders are great. And so this selection is based on New Sunrise's strength. It's not that there's something wrong with those other groups. And so I think it's great that there were a bunch of groups that wanted to work with the city. New Sunrise, some things that stood out to us on the committee were that they have a lot of experience working with, like, small, small-budget, lower-capacity nonprofits. And for these awards, the, one of the requirements from the legis, from this, from the city legislation is that the maximum annual budget for the applicant organization is half a million dollars. You can do a lot of stuff with a nonprofit with a budget of less than half a million. I used to be director of one, but that's, that's still small, you know, some organization has $10 million budget. So we wanted, New Sunrise stood out that they did a lot of work with these sort of small-budget groups. They understand fiscal sponsorship, and they've already, they did similar sort of intermediary role, again, I'm not sure if that's the right term, but they've done something similar where they sort of played this role in a grant or award distribution program for things like the Heinz Endowments, the Pittsburgh Foundation, some other stuff like that. And also, they are, we felt like they, they were, we would be a high priority among their, for them. Like, among their range of things they're doing, it seemed like they were very enthusiastic about working with us, and, you know, that's always a bonus.
It's like Heinz Endowments has their hands in a lot of stuff, including our schools are failing, but, or struggling, I should say.
Oh, sorry. Heinz Endowments was like a client of theirs.
Okay.
Heinz paid them to do some stuff.
They were telling me that they were doing this too. Okay.
No, no, Heinz, sorry. Heinz Endowments is not involved with this. If they wanted to give us money, I guess that would be up to you all. But no, Heinz Endowments is not involved, other than they were on New Sunrise's list of references because they'd been previously hired by Heinz to do a funding distribution project for that.
Okay, okay. I just want to thank you for your work and thank you for the tour with us and spending so much time.
Yeah.
Explaining a lot of things to me and Director Vargas and Director Pollock. I mean, because everybody was involved in responding to, to my concerns. So thank you very much for that. I have no further questions. I do want to just acknowledge that the council women's caucus was instrumental in putting this together.
Yeah, thank you all. And those were, like, really solid questions, and I, I'm excited to be working on this.
Yeah, we can't wait to see it going. Been a while.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. McMorland, for being here. We are also excited to see it moving, right? And so we've gotten lots of interest from the community organizations. One thing I think we haven't talked about now is kind of, even though the kind of application window isn't open, what kinds of things were in the council plan for this smaller pot? So Urban Ag was one of the things Councilwoman Smith talked about, but it isn't only available for Urban Ag organizations. So like, kind of what is the other types of food system-related, small organizations? And the, what kind of programming could it be used for? Like, I'll give, I'll give another example. We've had interest related to the small farms, but also in the kind of neighborhood food distribution level, even outside of food bank, for something called community refrigerators, right? And so imagine in the 95-degree here, heat here, if you've picked the, whatever's, you know, harvesting at your community garden that's going to be donated, it's going to not be, you know, you need to refrigerate it between the time that you've been out there picking it in the community garden and before it gets to the hungry households that, you know, it's being delivered to. So that was a concept that I would hope would be eligible here. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm familiar with that, the community fridge concept, and I, I think it's great and it's impactful. It's, and people are doing it in a lot of places. People are already doing it in Pittsburgh.
So my question is like, you know, so what kinds of things are going to be eligible areas of activity for these small grants? We talked about it, it has to be a small organization, but we didn't talk about the kinds of projects.
Right. So it's intended to invite a pretty wide range of creativity. So, you know, in contrast, I saw that in Buffalo, New York, they used ARPA funds for this very specific kind of community garden assistance, and we're sort of doing the opposite of that. But we do have to match, first of all, we need people to apply for something, so we'd only be able to fund things that people actually apply for. So outreach is going to be huge, and all your offices are going to be a big part of that. Within there, we can fund, and I think there's ways for people to creatively take these pieces I'm about to list and like combine them into a program that, you know, I'm not able to imagine yet. But some of the non-exhaustive list of things would be that we can support direct distribution of food. So that's, for example, you know, that's distributing food to people. But you could also do a program where you purchase food from local growers and then distribute that, or where you partner with a restaurant as a vendor and have them prepare food and deliver it to seniors in poverty. Then there's a lot you can do with refrigeration and other infrastructure that is part of distribution. So these funds can't be used, this was a determination by the law department, this is not like a discretionary program design thing, but they can't be used for like direct assistance to businesses. So businesses can be vendors, though, which is like where, you know, local growers, local restaurants, things like that. But then, a community fridge or a fridge in a food pantry, there's a lot of things you can do to increase the capacity to do that. To me, it seems like community fridges would be, would certainly be eligible. I mean, that's part of distribution infrastructure and increasing access to healthy food. Then there's also room for doing things related to the food system that are similar to what the city has already done in the past. ARPA allows us to do things like that. So that could include a whole range of education activities. So one thing that happens in the world of public health and food justice is that it's not always helpful to just come give someone a bunch of vegetables. You know, you have, you want to have things like how to cook in a way that's good for a diabetes-friendly diet, but that's also culturally relevant to the foods that you would, your seniors would already eat, for example. So we can fund that. We can host things that are similar to a farmer's market. Yeah, it's, I think the goal is to cast a really wide net because the food system itself effect is, is really very multifaceted.
Thank you. I think the, the purposes in this council report were, you know, similar. So it's not just about growing food, it's also kind of the storing, the moving, the logistics, the distribution, and building the capacity in each of those, each of those parts of the system. Again, going back to Councilwoman, Councilwoman Smith's comments about COVID, like, we really saw that some neighborhoods were having to kind of invent their own solutions, you know, starting food distributions where they'd never had one before, right? And so they had to secure sites, they had to create partnerships, they had to ask for volunteers, literally lift the boxes of food and distribute them and things like that. So the more that we have that capacity and experience in each of our city neighborhoods, the better we'll be able to face future challenges, whether they because supply chain, climate change, whatever, whatever those challenges are. And so that helps us on a daily basis meet the needs for vulnerable households even when there's not a global emergency. So it's exciting to see this moving. I'm assuming you'll let us know when the eligibility or when the grant window opens?
Uh, yes.
And are we looking at next year or sooner? If we're able to do final vote on this one next week, that means the administration can begin to execute this contract. Even while council's in recess, the, the administration is not, so these will be moving forward.
So I want to be cautious about setting, I'm not making a public commitment to a specific date, you know, like, but just so you have an idea, if we get, I think that we would have, first, we want to do more than one round of grant applications. Because we know that some organizations have been ready to go for a while, and some haven't even heard of it yet, right? So we're going to have more than one round, but we want to have them close together because we want to give organizations time to actually implement their project before the eventual ARPA final, final deadline of 2026. And so if, and because before I can make a real, I am going to give you a date in a second, but before I can make a firm commitment to a public date that like, say, a member of the public at this meeting or a reporter could quote, it, I would need to have that kickoff meeting with New Sunrise after we execute the contract. But based on everything I know so far, I think that we could have the first round of grant applications open in about a month and a half after executing the contract, maybe faster.
That's good, Gross. So sometime this fall?
Oh, yeah. Definitely sometime this fall, for sure.
Great. That's exciting. We look forward to that. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill, and I have lost my, 779, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation.
Thank you. You're good.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. You did great the first time.
Thanks, Gabriel.
That moves us on to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Bill 715.
Bill 715, resolution amending Resolution 187 of 2024, which provided for the extension of a professional services agreement or agreements with NCR Corporation to provide citywide credit, debit, and e-check payment services for the collection of various program and permitting fees for the city of Pittsburgh by extending the term of the agreement for five additional years at no additional cost to the city and ratifying NCR Corporation's provision of citywide credit, debit, and e-check payment services during the year 2023.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 715, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'd like to register aye votes for the rest.
Aye votes, so noted. Thank you.
Have a good day.
And noting that we still have a member joining online, we are, we still have forum. Thank you. So that moves us on to Bill 716.
Bill 716, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and a on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Fedtech LLC for an IT staffing and utilization study at a cost not to exceed sixty-three thousand dollars over one year.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill seven sixteen, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, Bill, uh, that moves us on to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley.
Bill seven seventeen, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Act five thirty-seven plan, special study for the thirty-first ward sanitary sewer system at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill seven seventeen, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill seven eighteen.
Bill seven eighteen, resolution further amending resolution number eight sixty-three of two thousand eighteen, effective January first, two thousand nineteen, as amended entitled, resolution adopting and approving the two thousand nineteen capital budget and the two thousand nineteen Community Development Block Grant Program and the two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-four Capital Improvement Program by reducing homeowner assistance by nine hundred fifteen thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents, increasing tenant assistance by seven hundred seventy-one thousand nine hundred seventy-three dollars and sixty-one cents, and by increasing Urban Redevelopment Authority personnel by one hundred forty-three thousand three hundred seventy-four dollars and three cents.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion, Councilwoman Charlin.
Uh, is anyone here to discuss this? Uh, as Mr. Geiger walks in the room?
Kelly Russell, Assistant Director for Community Development.
David Geiger, Director of Government Strategic Affairs with the URA.
Uh, so what are we doing here?
We're just shifting around line items. The URA has contracts with various organizations who can offer eviction prevention services. And with the shifting around the line items, the URA is going to be able to go or um, let's say, offer these funds to these organizations to offer those eviction prevention services.
Uh, so I, I'm first of all, I think that's great. I, you know, we we are supportive of another program that's doing that as well. Um, but I am curious, what are we pulling from? It looks like we're pulling from homeowner assistance. Is that the HEP program or no? Okay, what what program is that?
Yeah, you don't mind. So I, the, these are initially funds from the CARES Act, which was the first sort of stimulus bill from the federal government in the wake of the pandemic ahead of uh, the American Rescue Plan Act. Um, when we received the funds, when the city received the funds, initially there was budgeting that split assistance both for sort of emergency rental assistance as well as uh, assistance for homeowners that may struggle with their mortgages. Um, I want to say I don't have dates in front of me, but sort of about a year and once, there were other programs being stood up that were much more generous and could assist with that rental assistance payment. Um, we shifted a lot of the funding over to homeowner assistance because there wasn't the same sort of federal program in coming in for that. We never experienced sort of the need on the homeowner side of things and have since seen a disappearance of things like e-rap and the more generous rental assistance programs. So in the face of all that, we are now shifting these funds back to be used primarily for rental assistance. And that uh, HSP, what most of you know as an HSP program uh, funded through Hoff Funds is where some of this funding can go. It also, in the budget year where this was happening, we didn't have a legal assistance program yet, sort of split out and separate from housing stabilization. So a lot of the things we were doing with legal assistance was being funded out of state housing stabilization program. These funds, if council approves and budgets them, could be used for HSP, which is that direct rental assistance payment. Or it could be used for legal assistance services, which is like the mediation and lawyer for a day type work, which is often greatly successful because of the availability also of the HSP funds that tenants can use to help resolve their problems. So that's essentially what we're doing here.
Okay, um, I very much appreciate that uh, explanation. The, when we're saying uh, URA personnel in here as well, is this, is this just the the bodies that are required to work on this program?
Yeah.
Okay. Cool. Uh, and how long is this, uh, is this for?
Uh, city must spend the funds by June second, twenty twenty-five, so roughly a year.
Perfect. Okay. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Councilperson. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. So Mr. Gary, just to recap.
Sure.
It's like, so because most of us lived through this, but not every member, right? And so like the beginning of COVID, the CARES Act money came, and that's what this is. Even though it doesn't really say it that way, that's kind of still how we talked about it.
That's correct.
It was like bonus CDBG funds, the way the federal government called it.
Yes.
So uh, emergency COVID funds. And then, but then there was e-rap that came after that, like the next year, twenty twenty-one, maybe?
Yeah.
And so that was Emergency Rental Assistance Program, and we were very successful in moving all of the money. We got some seventeen million and then the county got more. I'm maybe confused who got what pot.
I don't have those details on the top of my head.
No, the county did get more.
Yeah, the county got more, but and so we were able to move some counties in the country and some cities in this country were slow to move it, but we were happy that we were able to move so much out to keep so many people in their homes. Remember, businesses were closed, people didn't have income, especially service workers and low-income city residents. So then we moved that money. Um, and so now, because that's depleted, we're reassigning this back to being available for cash assistance. Again, just recapping kind of what you said.
Yeah, that's all correct and
And then most of members um, are supportive of the expanding the lawyer for the day program. And so the current pilot project, when um, tenants are receiving that assistance, often it's making this kind of cash is available to make their landlords whole. So if it is, if they're in arrears in their rent payments, then if we vote this money through, that will replenish the pot. Because it's really been blowing through the money that's coming out of the HOF, if I recall.
Yeah, that's correct. HOF funds um, are not sufficient to meet the demand of housing stabilization uh, dollars that are necessary to keep people housed.
Great. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that we all kind of like, you know, un-understood that um, that way. So I appreciate that. And um, I know that this was a long time coming as well. Um, to work this out, so really appreciate finally seeing it here on the agenda. Thank you. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill seven eighteen, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill seven nineteen.
Bill seven nineteen, resolution amending resolution number fifty-three of two thousand twenty-one, which authorized the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a cooperation agreement or agreements with the Urban Redevelopment Authority for the performance of work related, of work related to the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Community Development Block Grant Program by realigning funding across three deliverables to fit pro-programmatic needs at an, at no additional cost to the city.
Motion to approve? Oh, sorry, he's there. Sorry.
Second. Uh, all, uh, any discussion?
Uh, again, just briefly, what are we doing here?
Yeah, so uh, the the prior bill and this one are are connected to each other. The the prior bill was simply a budgeting act that council just took. And then the bill currently in front of you all is a cooperation agreement authorization that allows the city and the URA to to enter into an agreement to effectuate what we just spoke.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill seven nineteen, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill seven twenty.
Bill seven twenty, resolution providing for reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for costs associated with the Ruthven Street Retaining Wall Project where PWSA would be responsible for paying one hundred percent of the actual expenses involved in certain work, providing for payment of the cost thereof not to exceed a total of nine hundred thirty thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars, where PWSA would be responsible for paying one hundred percent of the actual expenses involved in certain work to be described in the agreements at no cost to the city of Pittsburgh and further amending resolution number eight fifty-seven of two thousand twenty-three, effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, entitled resolution adopting and approving the two thousand twenty-four capital budget, the proposed two thousand twenty-four Community Development Program and the two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-nine Capital Improvement Program by increasing slope failure remediation by nine hundred thirty thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second. Discussion?
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill seven twenty, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, Bill seven twenty-one.
Bill seven twenty-one, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement, agreements and or amendments with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for the purpose of systemizing sewer stormwater separation and stormwater storage located in Brookline Memorial Park at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve?
Second. Discussion?
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill seven twenty-one, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, Bill seven twenty-two.
Bill seven twenty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for temporary right of entry and license at Moore Park for the purpose of stormwater improvements at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve?
Seven. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill seven twenty-two, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, Bill seven twenty-three.
Bill seven twenty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works and or the director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement, agreements and or amendments with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for the purpose of replacing the sewer system at McGee Field in the city's Greenfield Park upon DPW Forestry Division's review and permit issuance if applicable, prior to commencing this project at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill seven twenty-three, please indicate by saying aye. Affirmative recommendation, Bill seven twenty-four.
Bill seven twenty-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement, agreements and or amendments with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for the purpose of maintaining stormwater management systems in Phillips Park at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Dis- discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill seven twenty-four, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, Bill seven twenty-five.
Bill seven twenty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an access agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority at no cost to the city for access to certain water wastewater lines owned by the city and leased by PWSA for a PGH Lab demonstration project in which the city would run fiber optic sensor cabling manufactured by PGH Lab participant company, artificial intelligent monitored infrastructure by light sensors through certain wastewater lines.
Motion to approve?
Second. Discussion?
Sorry, I hate, we're so close. Uh, and I'm so hungry. Uh, I, would you care to come to the table? I've been curious what we're doing here.
Hi, I'm Gwendolyn Morris, Assistant Director of Business Technology with the Department of Innovation and Performance.
Uh, thank you for being here.
Sure.
Um, just real briefly, what, what are um, what all will we be doing with this?
So we have a program called the Pittsburgh Lab, PGH Lab, where we work with um, new and emerging businesses to um, to do pilot projects with us. And the University of Pittsburgh professor developed a fiber optic system where we can lay fiber optics over um, through wastewater pipes. And we wanted to do a pilot project with him for that, running a uh, fiber optics from the city county building down to the police station on, I believe it is Smithfield Street. And that's what this is for.
Well, um, sounds like a really interesting idea and um, happy to support that. It does sound like this is kind of very similar to the the stuff that we talked about. Was it a month ago, two weeks ago? I forget when it blends together, um, about running fiber optic cable, you having with a robot uh, that went through. But um
This is in conjunction with that in that this is, we would like to utilize the um, the wastewater pipe system from PWSA. This would allow us to do that.
Okay, um, all the questions out.
Councilman Charlin, uh, thank you. Council, I'm hungry too. Councilwoman Gross, follow that, Councilwoman Kail Smith.
So hard. Um, so thank you, um, Ms. Morris. So when we talked about the laying of the cables, I thought understood that the cables would be for, you know, broadband communications. What I am reading in this title is it's it's for censoring, which I would think is more of monitoring the sewer capacity.
What it would do is it would act, the the cable can be utilized, I'm sorry, the fiber can be utilized for any particular application. In this case, we're looking at it for communications. But um, according to the equipment that you would put on and would put on it, it would determine how it would be used.
Right. I believe I might have asked about that last time and I was thought I was told no when I said, because I then had read about the kinds of companies that are doing fiber optics and sewers. And noted that some of them are also monitoring the volume in the sewers, which for us is critically important because that's why we are polluting the rivers is when our sewers are full and then they overflow into the outfalls in the river. So, so this one, this demonstration would be doing both is what I'm understanding from you today.
We have, this, in this demonstration where we want to prove the capacity for the fiber to be laid in, through the wastewater pipe.
Sure, but once you have a cable, is the cable just like allowing higher bandwidth at the city county building or the police station? Or is it also being used to monitor the sewer capacity?
It could be.
But we're not sure if we will.
That's correct. According to the equipment that you put on it, you can do whatever you would like.
But are we in this authorization, are we authorizing you to do that?
No.
Okay, that's why I kept asking. I was really confused about what the answer was I was getting. So we are not monitor, not intending to monitor this sewer capacity.
That's my understanding.
Okay. That's what I was told last time.
This one is really for telecommunications and sensing the fiber optic network cables for their ability to be deployed in, in, be deployed inside existing wastewater systems. What they're, what they're going to put on that fiber optic, we're not, that's not part of this particular pilot. It's just a proof of concept for the connectivity.
I understand the proof of concept for connectivity, which is why I'm curious why it literally says sensors. But I don't need the answer anymore. We're at the end of this meeting. I mean, I'm supportive of doing the project, whether or not it does have sensors. But if you could follow up and clarify for me at some other point, no emergency here. Because it's just an X, it's something that we've been needing for a long time and the technology didn't, used to exist honestly ten years ago. You couldn't have like real-time internet-connected censoring. And our like, what weather demonstration project from twenty years ago was a one-time thing because it wasn't continuously monitored. It's just a whole separate other conversation that we can have another time. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you. And I I'm just going to ask that we get something in writing about what, where this is going, what uh, additional steps you're, you're planning on taking. And and some of this in writing, what we're being heard, what we're, you know, being told here at the table, so that we can go back and reference, you know, exactly where this is going and what exactly this is. Because we're saying we heard this, we thought that, we, you know, this was last, what I don't want to see What I don't want to see is every week or every couple of weeks, you're coming to the table with another step for this. And then before you know it, it's coming for the money for this.
Oh, I understand. This is just for the proof of concept. Once the, once we establish that it can be done, then we can determine what else we would want it to do. But for, for us, we're limited to this.
I think it was two weeks ago, we, we heard it was just going to be just about asking what, what the price would be or what, you know, some details about that. That was all we heard. And now this week gets a little bit further.
Yeah, that's, that was a different project.
The next week is going to be a little bit, so I would like a scope of what the project would be.
It's a different project.
It was a different project.
Different project?
It's the same concept of labbing fiber, but in this case, we're only talking about PGH Lab. This PGH, this PGH Lab project showing that fiber optic cable can be used, can be deployed using the water wastewater system. That's all this is doing for this particular project.
So I want to be supportive. I just want to make sure, because I do feel like I give I and P such a hard time, but I give everybody a hard time. But I just feel like what I want to do is make, I see our budget director shaking his head and I hired him. Anyway, I do want to see that there's a scope of work for, for, if this is connected at all to the, the one we heard of last week?
No.
Not at all?
That's correct.
And if there's anything further going to be for either of those, we'd like to see a scope of work.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. You, you answered my question too. I was going to say like, seems like we're ahead, we're getting ahead of ourselves if we're, we have a, an access agreement. We're, and, and the other part of it, it was only going to be, you know, a non-disclosure for getting a price. But if they're separate, they're projects altogether, that makes much more sense to me. So, okay.
I would love for like PWSA to be here for some of these too, if they're going to be for future ones. Because I'd like to know where they stand on some of this too.
I believe this will be up at tomorrow's PW, Friday's PWSA meeting, if you'd like to attend the meeting.
You really don't want me to just start attending this?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 725, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Having exhausted our meeting agenda, we will now move on to announcements. This afternoon at 2:00 PM, council will hold a workshop with Planned Parenthood. Next week, council will meet Tuesday, July 30 at 10:00 AM for the last regular meeting before recess. To register for this meeting, please fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage by 9:00 AM Tuesday morning. You may also register by calling 412-255-2138. Council's recess will begin next Wednesday, July 31, and will end Thursday, August 22. The first council meeting after recess will be Friday, August 23 at 10:00 AM. Is there anything for members?
I just want to invite people to our concert up in Mount Washington at Olympia Park. The City Parks is doing, I want to thank John Chapman for his work on it. And it is, I'm trying to find it. It's coming up on Saturday at 1 o'clock at Olympia. And he, we have a really great band, so if anybody's free to come, we have a concert and a little free picnic, so come on.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.